I'll call the meeting to order at 1:07. April, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Delgarza?
I am here.
Councilman Bachnight?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Young?
Here.
Councilman Lofgren?
Here.
And Mayor Protem Solis?
Here.
Okay, we're going to stand for the Pledge Allegiance. Where's our flag? We have the Texas flag. Oh. Da-da. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll have to find my chair first. I'd like to welcome everyone to the special City Council Workshop of March of 26, 2021. And also like to welcome any citizens that might be visiting.
Ma'am, I want to make sure, is the mics working?
I don't think so.
No.
No?
It's not on.
Testing one, two, mics. Good thing we're not live.
I thought maybe I was supposed to punch something.
Were you hearing her out there?
They worked at the very beginning.
Yeah, it worked.
Because I didn't hear her say stand up.
Testing one, two.
I didn't hear it either. Did you hear it more?
What? Hello?
Hello, nada?
Hello?
Can't hear nobody. One, two, testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Not even yours. Nobody says.
Right now.
(laughing). Okay, now I can hear myself.
Okay, yeah.
Mic check, mic check.
Mic check. Everybody check their mics?
Mic check.
Mike, you all right?
Mike.
They coming through?
Yeah, they came through. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Special City Council Workshop of March of 26, 2021. And if we have any, anybody in the audience, citizens, anybody that, you know, they're also welcome and I'd like this opportunity to thank them for being here. Okay, first item on the agenda is the review and possible amendment of the city charter. Mr. Bachnight?
Oh, thank you. I had brought this up with Raleigh and I've done an email to Thomas, I believe. And I don't know if we need to review the city charter. It's been a number of years. It's probably been eight or 10. I'd like your opinion, I guess, Mr. Guush, on it. I have one issue that I had on there and just...
Yeah, absolutely. The last time we did a charter update was in 2011 or 2012. You'll remember that, well, maybe none of you were here then.
Mm-mm.
Jan was not on council.
No. I think I might have been on the committee.
You might have been on the committee. So, the mayor called together a special ad hoc committee and that was, Will Armstrong was mayor at the time. He appointed three council members to be on the committee and asked each of them to appoint a citizen. And then that committee went through the charter front to back. I was on the committee as well. And we hired an outside charter expert, Charlie Zek is his name. He's an attorney out of San Antonio. He went through the charter looking for things that were legal issues and the committee brought up things that were community issues. And we compiled a list of, honestly, it was 25, 30 items. It was a very long list of things that deserved paying attention to in the charter. We prioritized that list and we took the top 15 of them to the citizens as ballot proposition in 2012. And so that was the last time the charter has been looked at. And there are a significant number of things that were on that list identified as, hey, if we ever get to do another charter election, we should consider amending this as well, that just didn't make the cut. So, yeah, if you're, if you guys are interested in doing another charter review process, that process worked pretty well. And it's, it would be probably time to start thinking about doing that this summer so that we could do the work in the fall and line up the charter election with next May's mayoral election.
That's kind of, timing wise, that's kind of what I was thinking. And, you know, it's up for Mayor Protem to call that together, right?
That's correct.
My one issue that I had, and I've had it since I've been on council, I didn't gain any traction before, was term limits for city council members. And I mentioned this to Thomas. I don't know if that's just a solution, looking for a problem, but we have term limits for all our boards that we appoint.
The only problem I see there is if we had term limits, guess who would have been off the council here?
Depends on what the term limit is. I was thinking four full year terms. I mean, we can debate that later.
Okay.
So, I mean, the maximum anybody could serve would be 14 years if you came in and did a partial one. But you could switch, you could switch, right? So, if I termed out in mine and I chose to run against Mr. Lofgren and just take a different seat, but...
Okay.
I don't, we don't have to debate it now. Main thing was, you know, I don't know where the laws have changed or anything enough to make a difference on a charter review, but it may not be a bad exercise or may not be anything we need to do.
So, do you think that we should wait until a little bit further down after May to set up a committee to start looking at this or what do you think, Thomas?
That's entirely up to you. If you, if, if the council as a whole is interested in pursuing that process, we're looking at the possibility of a maximum of two people changing this spring, right? This summer. That would still leave seven of you who are making the decision today still on council. I don't think it's too early to start at this point. What I mean by that is I think it's unlikely that a new mayor, or if Jeff should happen to lose his election, a new District III rep would change the process so drastically. If you're interested in starting the process, you could start by figuring out what council or what committee structure you'd like to see. You could even appoint members to that committee and that committee could begin its work. There is a lot of work that needs to happen to make that work.
Okay, I just want to make sure it doesn't interfere with our budget process and, you know, I'm kind of met out already, but I don't know how many more people might...
But legislative session wise, too, does it make sense? I mean, I don't know about, you know, bandwidth until after that.
Right. The legislative session will probably be over, what, mid-June is about when the governor's deadline is to sign all of the bills.
Yeah.
And then we'll be turning around and moving into an education mode with city staff on all of the bills that passed.
Well, they'll have redistricting.
In addition to that, we will also have redistricting and there are other issues like electric reliability that are also being talked about as a possible special session. So, we may still see legislative activity all the way through the fall or maybe even beyond. You know, one of the things that came up yesterday when I was at the State House...
For his sleepover.
For my sleepover, was the uncertainty surrounding the census and when we're even going to get that data at this point. All of that is going to delay redistricting and the committee that I was testifying to was, was not confident in any timeline associated with the census or with redistricting. So, that may drag on significantly into the fall or even longer. I haven't heard any timeline of how long that might take. So, if you wait for the legislature to end, it might be too late to start this process.
I want to briefly add too, Mayor Protem, you made a comment, so I want to clarify because I think it's important to verbalize that when we talk about putting together a charter review committee, it's not necessarily a committee made up of y'all.
Okay.
Because I noticed you made the comment about, you know, being spread out too thin. But this committee, and Thomas, I don't know if you have the specific breakdown, but from my understanding, the last charter review committee actually had an appointee by each council member, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And so, this committee, these committees are typically made up of people within the community. Might be an attorney that, you know, you appoint or some other subject matter expert that you think would be important to have in the conversation. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, that's a good point. Do we have to have them come out of our own districts or can they just be somebody that, you know, we recommend?
The, there was no requirement put on it last time and there is no requirement. You can design it however you want to. The mayor has the authority to create an ad hoc committee and define what that committee looks like and then make appointments to that committee. That is the privilege of the chair. And so, if you wanted to say, for example, that you wanted a committee that had a representative from each of the districts or maybe each of the four single member districts so that the whole city is represented, you could create that rule. You could ask each council member to appoint one citizen from their district to the committee. That would be a committee of six or seven, six, I suppose, committee, committee members who are citizens and not council members.
I like the idea of everybody having somebody from their district better because that way it's like, okay, they're representing me, they're representing Jan and everybody else, and I like that idea better. So, if we could draw it up that way, I'd like to set it up, you know, as soon as possible and we can start getting, do we have to have applications? No, we don't. So, we, we just ask people in our district.
There you go.
Okay.
How about this? We don't need a resolution of council to create this. It's strictly your prerogative.
Okay.
And so, if you would like, why don't we have each council member email you and I collectively their recommendation, probably copy Mr. Garza on that as well.
Okay.
And then we will, hopefully you guys will contact those people before you send me their name.
(laughing).
We'll compile that list, Madam Solis, and then you can, at that point, just appoint those people to that committee and we can start the process of defining what the committee's work is going to look like.
That'll be work, that'll be fine, that'll work.
Can you tell us who was on that committee before?
Not off the top of my head, but I, I do have that list. I believe the council members were Tom Halapaska, Paul Palasic, and, and, no, Louis wasn't on council anymore by that point. But then they each appointed, and so Philip Gittard was on that committee. Former, the, the people who had, who wound up getting appointed by were all former council members. And so, they were people who had experience with city government. I don't think that's necessarily a requirement, but that was what they chose to do. It was not a requirement at that time either.
Thomas, do you, do you have a list of those other items that were not put on?
I do have a list of those items and I'd be happy to send that out to each of you.
Thank you, that may help.
Will you send that to all of us?
Yes, I'll do that.
You talking about what they reviewed last, last time?
Yeah, the things that didn't make the cut, I'd like to see what...
Yeah. It's sort of a summary bullet list, you know, just an item and description, not necessarily the full reasoning behind it or anything like that, but it at least gives you an idea of what we're looking, looking at.
That may help kind of indicate who...
There you go.
Should we do this before the next meeting or some, the last meeting in April?
What deadline would you like to set?
I think the last meeting in April because, you know, we've got Holy Week and it's not going to be very feasible to get people in that mode right now.
Okay, so that would be April 20th?
Mm-hmm.
So, if council members want to get me those names by Monday, April 19th, we'll compile a list for Ms. Solis to consider.
Okay.
Council members, you might consider an alternate as well in case the person who initially volunteers is unable to fulfill the obligation, once we start describing how much work is involved.
Okay, so that concludes that discussion. Let's go to item two with this community infill strategy. Ms. Jan Scott?
Yes, thank you.
We, I'm sorry, go ahead. I can barely hear you.
Well, that, that's what I was wondering. It doesn't seem like my microphone is working.
I think maybe we just got to get really close.
Okay.
There we go. Oh, we hear you.
All right, I will love on this microphone.
Just so you're aware, Julie does have a few slides prepared for this discussion, but we're happy to take your lead.
That would be helpful. There have been several variance requests recently and I think Julie knows what, what those are that are, that I'm especially concerned about. And so, let's start with what she has.
It wasn't, it wasn't for me? I was taking you literally. Okay, so, sorry, I got distracted with the stuff here. So, Jan had approached me about a lot of the variances that have been going to Planning Commission and really what does that mean and what does that look like for infill in terms of infill and density within our neighborhoods? So, I just have a few brief slides to kind of talk about what those variances look like. We are seeing a lot of these variances as a result of Hurricane Harvey. As you may know, the General Land Office has a grant program that rebuilds severely damaged homes for property owners that meet the income requirements. This is similar to the home program that we've done in the past. We will, I'll be actually doing our own home program again. We're taking reservations. And so, whenever a, an existing home is completely demolished and is, even though it's being rebuilt on the same property, it has to meet all of the current codes. And so, a lot of these properties that maybe were developed in the 50s, 60s, or even beyond are on what we call legal subdivision lands or lot of records. So, a lot of record means that that lot was in that configuration prior to the city ever adopting a subdivision ordinance. And our first subdivision ordinance was adopted in January of 1956. And so, if a lot was in a configuration before that date, it is a legal lot, lot of record. A lot of times, there will be a lot that was developed prior to 56 and a house built on, upon that lot. And then some part of the yard was maybe sold to neighbors or adjacent property. And so, you had that, had a lot of illegal subdivision in land happening mainly what we see when we do deed records and deed research is a lot of legal subdivision of land happened in the 70s for whatever reason. I don't, not sure. There was title companies and such weren't policing it or what. But, so, a lot of these variances are really developed existing home sites. So, the first we want to talk about is a variance to the Martinez subdivision number four. This lot was built, or developed before our subdivision ordinance, I mean, after our subdivision ordinance, so it was never reported on a subdivision plat. So, it needed to be platted in order for that, a building permit to replace this home to be issued. The lot and its ownership and current configuration was about 6,000, 6,200 square feet. But Hanselman Road is a collector's street. It's at the corner of Hanselman and Surtucci. And so, right-of-way dedication was required. Once the right-of-way dedication took away 9.6 feet of the lot along the Hanselman frontage, the lot size reduced down to 5,265 square feet, which is below our minimum 6,000 square feet. So, again, it's an existing home site and really physically, there's not much change in what was happening out in that area, which is why we recommend approval. Basically, that right-of-way line just moved back nine point seven feet. And then there's going to be a new house built for that homeowner. So, here's the plat with the specifics. The second is a similar situation, a Multonado subdivision, which is on Julius, which again is off of Hanselman. So, this lot was about 45 feet in frontage, about 109 feet in depth, so it had 4,905 square feet. Again, it was an existing house that you can see that's being proposed to be torn down and a new house built. So, again, existing development conditions, but it is below the 6,000 square feet. And that's what the new lot, or the existing lot, looks like once platted. The third variance, and this one was actually denied by the Planning Commission, is a gentleman owned a lot that you can see highlighted in red, the second lot from the corner of Lake Forest and Nursery, and was proposing to subdivide that lot into two. So, the original lot was about 98 feet in width. So, when he was proposing to divide it in feet, or divide it in two, he only had, one lot became 49, proposed lot was 49 feet in width and the other was 49.01 feet in width. And our minimum lot width standard is 50 feet. So, it was under the lot width by one foot, but met all the other requirements, square footage, et cetera. This one is a little different or a little unique in that it is in one of our subdivisions that actually has an active homeowners association. And the deed restrictions on this property, which the city, of course, we don't have an ordinance that says we can enforce deed restrictions, but the deed restrictions for Lake Forest say that no property owner can subdivide a lot without approval from the homeowners association. So, his proposed subdivision did not meet his deed restrictions, which again, the city can't enforce without an ordinance specifying which ones we can enforce. And it did not meet the city's minimum lot size of 50 feet in width. Staff, nevertheless, we did recommend approval because a 49-foot lot versus a 50-foot lot is really the, there's not a fundamental difference with that one foot. If we had an entire neighborhood of 49-foot lots, you would really notice a difference. That would really add, you know, several more home sites, but just, you know, in, on this scale, those two feet, you know, aren't really materially different. The average lot width in Lake Forest and this, in the main Lake Forest subdivision is about 65 feet in width, so they would have definitely been on the lower end. But you do have some surrounding areas of Lake Forest that have a little bit higher density or, or a little bit narrower lots, not necessarily higher density because you still have the other requirements being met. But the neighborhood did speak in opposition and Planning Commission denied it. Also, for reference, whenever Planning Commission is looking at variances, they do not have to offer reasons to deny a variance. They can just deny a variance based off their wishes. If they're going to approve a variance, then that is when the criteria come into play. So, this is the plat that was submitted with the variances, so it's a major plat, and was denied by Planning Commission. The property owner also owns the corner lot and has since submitted a minor plat that meets all of the city ordinances. There was a lot of red lines just for, you know, minor issues such as we're making them change the address now that the corner lot is included in the minor plat. So, that has since been submitted, resubmitted back to the property owner to make all those corrections. I believe Lake Forest has issued a stop, stop demand letter to the property owner, so I'm not sure that he will resubmit. We'll see. But because he owned the corner lot, he was able to take two feet off of the corner lot, add it to the neighboring lots, and now they meet all of the city ordinances. The next variance is one that you will probably see in late April or May. And it is a corner lot. I'm actually going to go through the history on this lot. So, originally, the corner lot was subdivided with the adjacent two lots, as you can see on this subdivision plat. It was three lots and they are platted as residential. They front Navarro, which is a collector's street. Navarro, our collector's streets cannot have residential driveways. If it's residential use, you cannot have a driveway to build a collector's street. And so, to mitigate that, an access easement, private access easement was platted along the back of these lots so that the middle two lots would not have to have direct driveway access to Navarro. They could utilize that access easement and have rear entry vehicular access to the properties. Since then, the middle two lots have been replatted into a commercial lot. And a commercial lot, of course, can have access to a collector because the parking requirements are such that you cannot, you don't back out from a commercial entity. You have to have drive aisles and all of that adequate maneuvering space to be able to head out directly onto a collector. So, that leave, that plat still left the corner lot in its current configuration. So, because of that access easement, there was a rear building line that was platted at the same width of the access easement because even though our minimum building line is 10-foot, you can't establish, we didn't want to establish a 10-foot building line but have a 25-foot access easement because you can't build in an access easement, otherwise obviously people can't access it. And so, there's, this is a variance, not with a plat, but just to reduce the building line on that property. The access easement has since been released by separate instrument, so it is no longer in play. The adjacent property owners and all parties involved in that access easement have released it and that's been filed at the courthouse. And so, currently, you have this 25-foot setback line when the code requires a minimum 10-foot setback line. So, the property owner could have approached dealing with that in two ways. They could have hired a surveyor and prepared a minor plat to reduce that setback line from 25-foot to 10-foot at the cost of a minor plat. Or they could have submitted a variance for a building permit to reduce that setback line from 25 feet to 10 feet. Just as a side note, this is, they are proposing to build a duplex. The lot is wide enough. We do have a minimum standard of duplex lots to be 70 feet. So, it really meets all of our minimum standard rules whenever we look at what we have currently in the subdivision and development ordinance.
Why is a duplex not residential?
It is residential. You just have to...
You said it is, but it is commercial.
The, the adjacent two lots, I'm sorry, the, the, is there a pointer on this?
It was originally submitted residential completely. Then they combined the two middle lots into one commercial lot and the end lot was still residential.
Oh, the duplex is on the residential lot?
Right.
Yeah, so the variances for the corner lot, which you can still see, has the access easement shown on this plat because this plat actually is replating the middle two lot. And the previous plat still controls the corner lot. So, what do all these things mean? There we go. I was hitting the middle button. Yeah, so this is the lot with the variance and this is the commercial lot. So, what does this kind of mean as far as our ordinance and where we're going? So, as you all know, we do have a unified development ordinance update on the horizon. We did publish the RFP. We did keep that open for close to eight weeks and so, the responses are due April 14th. And so, hopefully, we will go through this election process, you know, through May and have a contract to counsel sometime in June for that. But these are considerations that we need to be thinking about as we go through this process and talk about infill and density, is deed restriction enforcement. There are two types of deed restrictions that we can look at enforcing. The bulk standards, which are your setbacks, lot sizes and those sorts of kind of technical restrictions, and then use restrictions. We need to talk about bulk standards and do we want to continue with a one-size-fits-all approach for the entire city? Specifically, our lot size, our minimum lot size for single-family residential is 6,000, which is historically a little bit larger than kind of industry standards. A lot of your cities across the country have a minimum lot size of 50 by 100 or 5,000 square feet. Do you have a question?
Yeah, what is it downtown? It's smaller downtown, isn't it, for infills? And I thought lot size downtown was smaller than the rest of it.
So, downtown is pretty much all platted and so, we rarely, if ever, see any plats for downtown.
But what's the minimum? Isn't it smaller than...
So, we have a cottage lot, residential cottage lot that's 4,000, if you're in a historic district. It's not just specifically to downtown. But as far as, say, we wanted to create more, like that vacant lot by the library, we wanted to create a very urban style development, that would need a variance under our current code. So, that's what we mean...
Your question, though, is what is it now, right?
Yeah.
And so, we can get you an answer.
It depends on the use.
We can get you an answer to your specific question.
It's 4,000, I knew it was.
Yeah, it's 4,000 for cottage lots, but if you're commercial, it's 10,000. So, it depends on the use.
Correct.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
So, again, outside of deed restrictions, but on plats, we have a lot of setbacks. But we have this setback enforcement chart, which basically ties back to our ordinances that we had on the books at the time that plat was filed. So, it's kind of all over the place depending on if the plat was filed in 1960 or 1980 on whether we enforce the platted setbacks. And of course, you know, platted setbacks typically really speak to an established building line in the community or in the neighborhood because neighborhoods are all generally developed at one time. And so, if you're, have a new plat and you have that platted setback, there's going to be uniformity. And basically, do we want to look at platted setbacks or established building lines? And then Florida area ratio is another kind of big discussion to have, which I actually like that we do not have any Florida area ratio standards at the time, but a lot of cities do. And this really ties back to the Verdunity Study. So, Florida area ratio is basically how much building you can put on a lot or how much impervious cover you can put on a lot. A lot of cities kind of restrict that to 55% or 45%, and we do not have standards. We do have some minimum open space because we have setbacks and so, you have to have open space in your setbacks. But I think that really also plays into how some of our... But I think that really also plays into how some of our neighborhoods with very large homes, even though they may be on large lots, came out favorably in the redundancy study, because you're looking at lot square footage versus, you know, appraised value, and larger buildings generally have a higher appraised value, so. Floor-to-ratio is kind of a big development kind of standard that can really make an impact in your community as a whole. And then, lastly, neighborhood integrity, and that really gets to that, are we, we want to continue one-size-fits-all, or do we want to start maybe looking at neighborhood specifics and applying thing, applying any sort of protections once you have a neighborhood built out and kind of established and setting and saying, okay, this is, this is the standard for this neighborhood that has been established, you know, for however many years? So, there's lots of, you know, information and opinions and thoughts on all of these different topics, but they are going to be big considerations as we go through the UDO.
So, with that information, the reason that I asked for this is because, hey, this is a work session where we can discuss some things. And I was aware of the two variances that had been at Planning Commission and hadn't made it to us yet, but at the same time, on our last agenda, the other two variances were on our agenda, the one on Hanselman Road and the GLO one, I forget where that is. And they were on our consent agenda, just boom. And I thought, okay, we've got some folks that are trying to squeeze down lots, we've got the redundancy study, which we all think means that we should be getting a lot of density. And I just wanted to make sure that we had some discussion about, I'm not in favor of just, if you can squeeze it in there, let's do it. The two, the Hanselman Road and the GLO, I was fine with them, I thought about pulling them just to explain that I was fine with them. One of them, the GLO one, because it was already that use, and they were building another house on the same lot, and the Hanselman one started out big enough, and it was through our taking of the land that they ended up with a smaller lot. I was okay with both of those, as long as the Hanselman lot didn't end up taking 2/3 of the lot, you know, then that's a whole other issue. And I wouldn't be in favor of letting them build on it if it was so close to a road that we needed all that road. But I just felt like the, I am not in favor of, oh, the city now wants to cram in as much as we can, wherever we can, let's tell staff to approve everything they can. And I just, I felt like there hadn't been any discussion, one way or the other, other than, hey, we've got this redundancy study, density's great, and then I start seeing these variances, some of which the neighborhoods are objecting to. And I just felt like maybe it would be a time for us to, to have a little bit of discussion, you know, maybe you all basically agree with me, that the two that we've already approved made a lot of sense, and I really don't have an issue with those. But I don't want to, especially in a situation where there are restrictions that say various things about a lot, that we just say, oh, well, let's just ignore the restrictions, because we don't enforce them right now, and we don't have the Unified Development Ordinance, which is going to give us, you know, we haven't discussed it, so let's cram them in now. So, just head nodding or disagreement or something.
Well, I think definitely when a variance comes before, and you, Planning Commission Chairman, as I was, you know, I always looked at it, you know, I would have felt it just like the Planning Commission did and said no to the one at Lake Forest, doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood. And I think we need to take that into consideration when we're looking at some of these items, does it meet the character of the neighborhood? And it's not just always cut and dry. I like the variance process for the fact that we can just make a decision. Is this right, is it the right thing to do, or is it, you know, we're not trying to just cram something in there, but is it the correct solution for the problem? So, I like the variance process the way it is, and I'm okay with, you know, having any number of variances come, because each one's unique.
I agree.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be a variance.
I agree with Mr. Balknight, but Jan, would you feel better if they weren't part of the consent agenda, and that way, we could discuss them individually?
I thought about that, but not necessarily. I think that if, because we have the option to pull any item that we want to, and so, I felt like as long as we were at least clear amongst ourselves that we weren't just ignoring or, you know, rubber stamping or something like that, I don't, I don't think that they necessarily have to bring them to us. If it's something controversial, though, and they already know that, I would think that our staff wouldn't put it on the consent agenda.
Okay, well, I thought that might make it a little bit easier to discuss, and that way, you know, everybody, they had something to say, they could voice it at the meeting.
So, Julie, you're.
And as a chance said, we have the opportunity to pull it off the consent agenda, but I think the commission does an extremely good job, and our departments do an extremely good job. Variances are for a reason, there's situations that are unique, i.e., Hurricane Harvey threw a bunch of variances at us. I think, I have to agree with Jeff 100% that we're doing a great job, and to make more work out of this than what needs to, I think it's unnecessary. I think we need to go with what we have.
Well, I'm not proposing that we change any of our procedures, I'm just wanting to make sure our policy isn't just, you know, if you can get it in there, we're going to approve it.
Our guide on the consent agenda is if staff is recommending approval and Planning Commission recommended approval, then we place it on the consent agenda. If ever there is a discrepancy of those two, or it's an appeal, then it would go to the regular agenda.
Okay, so, in the, in the instance that the staff would deny it, then we would have, see it as a separate item in the agenda?
Yeah, if staff were to recommend denial and the Planning Commission were to approve it, then it would be a regular agenda item, or if staff were to recommend denial and the Planning Commission were to deny it, and it would be an appeal, then it would also be a regular agenda item, or any, whenever they're different, is when it would be a regular agenda item versus a consent. So, the only time it's a consent is when it's a double approval recommendation.
Julie, is that at the point where the owner is allowed to come and talk to us? Or is he aware that it's going to be on the agenda, so if he has something to say, he can come before us?
Yes, so generally, we advise them to talk during citizen communication, although I think, and Thomas may have to correct me on Robert's rules, that you could give them the right to speak, you know, at any time during, if, during the resolution consideration. But we generally advise, we definitely advise them of the day, and then we advise them to speak during citizen communication if they so choose to.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, you talked about lot sizes, is our current lot size just for, let's even say, new development for housing, residential, is?
6,000. 6,000.
Is that too large?
I.
I don't want to put you on the spot by putting you on the spot.
Yes, I believe that it's a hindrance to affordable housing, you know, because these are minimums. So, a developer that wants to develop a different style neighborhood with larger lots, absolutely, we don't have a maximum, so they could develop lots all the way up to half an acre, acre, you know, whatever they want. But I do think that the 6,000 square foot is a hindrance to affordable housing. The general planning standards since, you know, definitely since the 1920s, when, you know, City Beautiful Movement took off, is a, is a 50 by 100 or 5,000 square foot lot. You will see that, we even have a lot of plats in Victoria that replicated that 5,000 square foot lot over and over and over. North Heights is a good example of, I think you probably have a lot of 50 by 100.
Yeah, that was my concern is.
When, when did we transition to 6,000?
In 1992, I'm not sure what the history was before, but our current ordinance was pretty much revamped, rerode holistically, a large, big approach was in 1992.
And that's kind of where I was going, as far as affordable housing and the redundancy study as far as density and payback, maintenance of roads and things of this nature, are lot sizes restrictive, too restrictive, and causing an issue for our citizens and taxpayers?
A lot of cities approach it with, through different zoning districts, where they have different standards for different areas. I like, I like the fact that we don't have zoning, but we could baby-step into certain types of zoning rules that would help solve some of the issues that we do see coming up.
And as our population ages, we don't need maybe as big of yards and as big of houses, and is that a niche that could be useful for our?
But we want to protect the neighborhoods that do have the large lots.
Absolutely understand that, but I'm saying for, but we're restricting new development as well with a 6,000-foot lot, so that's.
Right, all of it. It's that one size, and sometimes, is that the best approach for us?
Okay, thank you.
Well, and there'll be plenty of opportunity to have more conversation on it as we implement and roll out the UDO redevelopment process, there'll obviously be a lot of meetings, public input meetings, et cetera, where we can have that conversation, but, but this is a good segue into that, so thank you. Mayor Protem, I'll just transition for the rest of the agenda. Mike is joining us, because he has the luxury of overseeing or being part of two out of the three items that will be discussed here this afternoon, and he'll help kick it off. You won't hear much from me today, the last time we were here, you did, because a lot of the players had to zoom in, but they're here live in color, and so, you'll get to hear directly from them today, so, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, and good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. So, today, what we want to do is to provide you a fairly comprehensive update on our capital improvement plan. We call it a CIP for short, but we want to provide you an update. So, before I begin my presentation, let me direct you to the document that is before you. It is this document, so it essentially has the PowerPoint presentations, as well as the proposed or recommended projects. So, the screen may be a little bit too small, but you could follow in this book as well, if you need. And let me thank the staff that worked on the book. So, joining me on this presentation today will be Todd Yarich. So, Todd essentially will cover, will go over each of the projects that are recommended, and then followed by Gilbert Reina, our CFO, and he will cover the financing strategy, how do we finance those projects, and then we'll talk about next steps. So, to begin with, Council, is what is a CIP? So, again, it's the Capital Improvement Plan, so it's a multi-year document that essentially identifies the major needs of the city, the major capital needs, such as the streets, drainage, and so forth, right? And it covers a five-year period, so most CIPs are five years, and for ours, we're looking at a 2022 to 2026 CIP. The projects for CIP are typically large projects, about $100,000 or more, and also has a life expectancy of 10 years, so.
Greater than 10 years?
Yes.
Not 10 years?
10 years or more, that's right. Exactly, so it has to be a project that with the life cycle of 10 years or more. So, in terms of our process, so historically, Victoria has essentially focused on streets and utilities. So, for this year, we are trying to be more inclusive. Nonetheless, our CIP will be majority-focused on streets and utilities, but we are looking at a more broader, more inclusive process that includes your facilities, libraries, and so forth, not just streets and utilities. We are also focusing more on improving quality of life, and also meeting the council needs and priorities, as well as being consistent with our 2035 comprehensive plan. So, I put this slide in to, to essentially tell you that the CIP document has to be a living, breathing document, because the city's priorities and needs change regularly as we develop master plans and studies. So, it has to be flexible, and because we have to review it as well every year.
Or finances can change, too.
Correct. So, at our last workshop, staff presented to you all of the projects that were submitted. Overall, we had about 85 projects that were submitted by the various departments, and we also discussed the debt capacity, how can we finance them? So, since that meeting, the last workshop, our staff, primarily our public work staff and our finance staff, reviewed all of the projects, and our internal committee that we established, reviewed the projects, analyzed them, ranked them, and approved the final project list, which is before you today. And also, staff, our finance department, determined how do we finance these projects? So, in all, Council, we have a total of 69 projects, 69 projects over the five, for the five-year plan, totaling $119 million. Now, I should say that about 90 to 92% of the 69 projects are streets and utilities. So, we are still prioritizing our streets, because we know that's a top priority for our community, improving our streets, sidewalks, and so forth. So, 92% of those projects are streets and utilities. And these projects are essentially what we call shovel-ready, they are ready to go, we've already done the scope of work, and also the cost estimates. So, now, we also know that we may have additional projects, because we have several master plans that are underway. So, as you know, Council, we have four master plans, we have the thoroughfare master plan, we have the downtown master plan, we also have the drainage master plans, all of those plans are underway, so we anticipate projects coming out of those master plans that could be considered. So, next, I will ask Todd Yarich, who's our new CIP manager, to go through the projects that we are recommending. Again, we have a total of 69 projects, so he will not go over each one of them, but he will give you a highlight. And again, the projects are in your book, if you want to follow along with him.
Excuse me while he's coming up, who is our internal committee?
So, on the internal committee, it includes city management office, which includes the city manager, the two assistant city managers, and then we have Julie Fulgham, our Development Services Director, our Public Works Director, Ken Gill, also our grants administrator, Katie Connolly, our PIO, our Director of Communications, Ashley Strivel, is on the committee, and of course, Gilbert Reina, our CFO.
Who is Todd?
Todd as well, Todd is the staff to the committee, and he's doing a great job as our new CIP manager.
He's not that new, but he'll get a chance to present to you today. The stool we put behind the podium is actually for Todd. We figured he needed a step stool, so you could see him.
I had planned on standing on that, by the way, but.
Todd, you can use the handheld if you want, there's a handheld mic up there.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council, Mike, thanks for the introduction. Like I said, my name is Todd Jarris, the CIP Project Manager for the city. So, today, I just wanted to, you know, go over these projects, not, not in terms of one by one, or spend a lot of time, kind of keep it a high level. If you feel passionate about a certain project, or you want to discuss in more detail, the way this is going to work is, in your book, you have a, you have tabs, and for example, we're going to start on tab says CIP 22. So, when you open up that tab, you'll see a spreadsheet that has all the projects for 22, or, excuse me, fiscal year 21 through 22, and then behind that spreadsheet, so we're in CIP 22 tab, and then behind that spreadsheet, you'll see all the different project worksheets. And so, all of, all of these project worksheets, the intention there is to have all the information about, about a certain project, all compiled into one, one page, so that way, you can find, any clarification that you need about a certain project will be on that, on that page, so.
Well, before, before you do that, you just actually answered one of my questions, which was why something was on here twice, because I see it's got different tabs. But would you just? But would you just, because I don't know what year it's in, because I didn't realize that until just now.
Sure.
But the Ben Jordan Mill and Overlay Sam Houston to Loop 463, which is number 75 on the whole group, and I guess it's in worksheet 84. That one catches my attention just because I don't know all the terminology exactly right for what a reconstruction versus fixing the top of it. So could you explain that one, because I think there's some major problems with that road?
Okay, yeah, and I may lean on Ken a little bit on some of this, but so.
And if you're going to do it later, that's fine, but.
Well, we can touch on it now because it's sort of important in terms of understanding that, you know, one of the things that it seems like we're doing this year or in the future is we're kind of adding these Mill and Overlay projects to our portfolio. I know we've done some in the past, but what we've done is we've hired a consultant to come in and give us an analysis of the subgrade of some of these roads. For example, these roads that are, the streets that are on here on this list were, were developed or recommended by the I M S, the Street Assessment Cost Optimization Approach. So as we, as we went through it and put each one of those projects per the, per the year that they were on there, it came up to where we said, well, we need to really analyze, can we really do that type of rehab activity? And so, so we're going to, I think, and Ken, we're going, we're going, like I said, we hired this consultant. We're going to have a kickoff meeting next month, I believe, and we're going to ask them to analyze the various streets. So a lot of these Mill and Overlay projects are going to be like that. So again, the year that it's in is, is, was identified by that street assessment study. So for example, that Ben Jordan Mill and Overlay, if you went to that project, which should be on page 84, you'll see on there the P C I score on the bottom right-hand corner of that, of that project worksheet. And, and that's how we, that's how like these projects were selected, so.
That's in fiscal year 25. You had asked kind of where in the schedule it is.
Right, yeah.
So that specific project which you labeled as project 75.
Yeah, that, this chart has the page numbers, and that, that's helpful.
Just really, just to add briefly to that, because I don't want to just fly over it because I think it's important, is that one of the benefits of going through that I M S study was this realization, which internally staff was already aware of, but it was just something that we didn't do, that we needed to diversify our portfolio on how we go about maintaining streets. Because historically, as we've discussed, the approach had been completely reconstruct streets. And not only completely reconstruct, but to do the whole neighborhood while you're at it, right? And so the reality is that there is a slew of different treatments that you can do on a street, ranging from a seal coat, which we've started doing, not started, we've done and continue to do. What we've started doing is the Onyx product that makes it just way better. But anyway, so there's that, then there's the Mill and Overlay, which just kind of scrapes off a section, and then you go in with, with, you know, new asphalt. That implies that the subgrade and the base is in good shape. And then the more intense treatment is of course a complete reconstruct, meaning that the base is just out of whack. Many projects you can mix and match, so for example, you can do an overlay on a whole section, but maybe one of the blocks out of that six blocks needs to be completely reconstructed, right? So then you just reconstruct that one block and then just Mill and Overlay the rest. And so what we're getting better at is being more specific with that piece, right? Let's fix the street that's, needs work, not the entire neighborhood. And let's give it the treatment that it needs, not the one that maybe we desire, because that's more cost-effective and we could spread out the few dollars that we have to make a greater difference. And so beginning in fiscal year 22, you will notice that there's a substantial amount of money that is dedicated to a Mill and Overlay project because we want to get back into that. And to the resident, they're not going to know the difference, right? Because a Mill and Overlay product is going to be an asphalt finish. And so to the public, you know, they're not going to necessarily know whether, you know, they're not going to catch the difference between that and a complete reconstruct. They're, hopefully will notice that we're going to have more streets, you know, being fixed to some extent. But anyway, I just don't want to fly through that because I do think it's important to note that we are adding Mill and Overlay moving forward to the street program.
Well, and just so for a follow-up on that, I just want to verify that, like if it's Mill and Overlay, and as he just said, there might be places that need more on that particular stretch of street, it's in pretty good shape, except for right outside the subdivision that's on that street and right across the street from the vacant land that we own, where there are cracks two inches wide. And Mill and Overlay doesn't strike me there, and so I just wanted to make sure that there would be that consideration.
And we do that already even with the seal coats. And so we wouldn't, we wouldn't go in and just, you know, seal coat a street without ensuring that the base underneath it is in good shape, right? Especially based off of previous experience, right, like in Woodway. But we would obviously make sure that the base is in good shape, and if some spot, they're typically referred to as spot repairs.
Yeah.
If spot repairs are needed, we do the spot repairs and then we'll go in and do the seal coat. And so the same approach would apply to a Mill and Overlay.
Okay, I just, I want to call your attention specifically to that area because yesterday I drove it and I was looking and okay, hey, looks like all the cracks are sealed. And oh, wait a minute, right here, there are Grand Canyons in the middle of the road.
I can give you the technical reason, a lot of that is that ditch is drying out on the edge because it's open. And when it dries out, it pulls that pavement apart. We are crack sealing it, we keep doing that, we've even added, you know, some fines into it to keep it from cracking, but it's that ground, it pulls it, and it just, it pulls that whole pavement. You know, going in there like Jesus, there may be another, other items that we may have to do to keep that road from, from separating, and we'll sure look at that as that time comes forward.
That's, the Mill and Overlay got my attention because of that, thank you.
Yeah, thank y'all for the, the detailed explanation on that, that was everything I was intending to say, actually. But I think one thing I wanted to add to that was.
Say it, man.
I know, I know. One thing I just wanted to add to that, though, is, and again, I'm, you know, learning this as, as on the fly, but, you know, I think the goal or, you know, is to be proactive in, in the rehab or the repair of these streets, using that I M S data and not allowing the streets to get to a point where they need full-blown reconstruction, right? So that's kind of, that's kind of what, that's what you're going to see a lot on this, on this, on these lists, is that these streets are in here, they're not necessarily, you know, in bad shape or they need to be reconstructed, but we can spread out the dollars and Mill and Overlay and extend the life expectancy of, of these streets versus letting them go to reconstruction where it's obviously a lot more expensive. Okay, so again, we'll try to go through some of these, I don't want to be too monotonous or tedious about, about this process, but, but again, if you, if you want to stop me, there's, there's project worksheets that we can, we can get into more detail on. So, so North Heights Phase 7, that's, that's Nuasis Street, which includes all the perpendicular streets, north and south. That's essentially the last phase of that project, and that completes that project out for, for North Heights. Next project, residential street program, I want you guys to go ahead and turn to page 13 if you can. This, this residential, residential street program, let me use this thing if I can, so. Anyway, so, so the, the goal here is to, is to allocate roughly $3 million per fiscal year. I'm sorry.
So just really briefly, in case you're lost, so we're in tab for C I P 2022, and there are page numbers, and if you find page number 13 under tab C I P 2022, you'll find the residential street program.
I just want to say whoever designed this book, thank you for making the numbers go all the way through, not doing one through 25 in this tab and one through 25 in the next tab. Thank you for just making the numbers go through.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, Gilbert, not to digress too much, but Gilbert, yesterday was, was conveying to us just how proud, I'm using the word proud, impressed. He, he has been with the development of this program because in the years that he's been involved with it, this is a lot of information that we're sharing with council, probably for the first time to this degree. And we're not even in May yet, right? I mean, normally the final C I P decision is made in May, and so here we are in March, already providing a substantial amount of additional information than you've ever, probably ever seen leading up to a C I P decision. And so we're certainly very proud of, of that. I know it probably feels like overkill, it's a lot of information, but the good thing is no decisions are being made today, right? That'll come in May, like usual, it's just that hopefully now you have more information to base your decision on that hopefully will lead to a better product, and staff certainly absolutely deserves all the credit. All right, so page 13.
Yep, thank you. But yeah, so I just wanted to bring your attention to this, to this residential street maintenance program that we're, we're allocating 3 million per fiscal year for. This, this particular program, if you, like I said, on page 13, you'll see the projects on the right-hand side of that project worksheet. These, these particular streets are, were again, they were, they were identified per the I M S Cost Optimization Study. And so again, we've, we've identified the 3 million, and then these streets here will get seal coats as well as thin Mill and Overlays. Moving down to the project number three, we got the Lone Tree Acres project. This project is currently in design right now. This is a, this is the drainage, drainage portion that's in design, I believe, right, Ken? Okay, both, both drainage and, and street construction. That portion is already in design right now and, and looking to kickoff for next year.
Are you, will, are you able to tell us, you may not, is it still going to be open ditches?
Yes.
Yes, more than likely. They are, they are looking at every available option in that neighborhood. They, they really are looking at, at different design content, concepts that Victoria may not have seen, but other communities are doing them, and they are exploring everything and they're bringing, going to bring us a lot of proposals.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a question, Jared, going back to page 13. If I look at the budget for 2022 and then the highlighted streets and area descriptions, that is the three point, the $3 million, those jobs, because they're yellow and yellow?
Correct, it adds up. If your question, if your question is the projects on the right, do they add up to the 3 million? The answer is yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. And that's the same process through the whole book?
Correct, where, where, where applicable, yes.
Yes, sir, okay.
Yeah, each one of those, so for each fiscal year, that project worksheet for that maintenance program, those projects will all add up to, to roughly 3 million.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess for reference, you know, if, if you went back to the very first page of that tab and you extended this sheet out, you would be able to see that same amount, but you'd be able to see where it would be coming from, from a funding source standpoint. We'll get more into that when Gilbert jumps up and gives his part of the presentation. But trying to give you as much information in as easy as a format as possible, right? But that's how that is all tied and connected. So those $3 million that we just went over, for example, that you suggested, do all those streets add up to 3 million? Yes, and if you went back to this front sheet, you'd be able to see that that $3 million, which is project number two, is coming from the general fund.
I see it, thank you.
Right, yeah.
I'm not sure if you've been doing this, but I really like the chart that shows us the follow-through on these projects over the future years, so that we can see the total of the project cost.
Right, yeah, I think the, the intention there is to have all the information, you know, we're currently showing you just the, the phases by year. However, the worksheet, with the intention there is to, is to have the entire funding, you know, that, it's really one project, but we, we have to phase it out over years, so that was the goal there.
And, and doing it this way helps ensure that we can, while it's not a guarantee, it increases the likelihood that we can follow through with what gets communicated. Because historically, historically, there has been an opportunity to do that to a better degree. Because oftentimes, you know, you get presented a five-year C I P program, and you probably assume a lot of things. You know, you assume that there's been a tremendous amount of work in the background that assures that that project, you know, three years from now is going to get done. That wasn't maybe to the extent that, that it needed to be, and with this process, it ensures that that's the case. And that's why Gilbert's piece is very important, because we recognize that while C I Ps need to be living, breathing documents, we also recognize that we're making a commitment to saying, you know, X project is going to be funded, you know, in 2023 or 2024. And what you, what you probably have become accustomed to hearing is, you know, once you get to that two or third year, it's like, well, things change, you know, money this, money that, you know. And so we want to limit that as much as possible, and by thinking this strategically ahead of time helps limit those instances where we would say, yeah, sorry. So we're trying to be better at that.
And specifically, what, what Jesus is mentioning is what we've done is we've taken like, for instance, a neighborhood, first year is design, second year is the utilities followed by the street. Before, we would just throw it all in together, you'd see it in one year, and you would think, well, this should be happening in one year. No, it's, it is a phased process, but it makes it much simpler for us and for financing.
I like the fact that you budgeted each year, because that's my next question, but I see that each year has its own spreadsheet, so we know where the funding is coming from for all the projects, so that's excellent.
And Gilbert will, will run through that as well. Anyways, keep going, sir, we keep stealing your thunder.
Guys, all good. So let's move on, we'll go to project number four, again, Woodway, Phase 3 Reconstruction. This is the, the front portion of Woodway.
And that's on page 15 if you kind of just keep going in the book.
Right, right, yeah, hopefully you guys can see that, I'll, I'll highlight the page numbers as we, as we go down. Again, stop me if you have any questions or need clarification.
Thank you.
And that, by the way, Woodway, that is a reconstruction. Number five is Bridle Ridge Reconstruction, that's on page 16, that's Phase 2 of Bridle Ridge. That's a, that's a, I think we have three more phases, Phase 2, 3, and 4, so we're looking to do Phase 2 in 22. Number six is Dairy Road Reconstruction, that's from Salem, Salem to Whispering Creek. So, so in, in 22, we're budgeting for the design of Dairy Road.
You can use C B D G money for the sidewalks, I know that because it's in that area. Just another funding source. In fact, the sidewalks on Salem Road were paid with C B D G money.
Can you use them on Leary Lane also?
No, Leary Lane, no, Leary Lane isn't in a, in a census block that we can use C B D G funds in.
I was thinking of schools.
In case you need some money.
Yeah, and, yes, and that's where the leaving, living, breathing document, you know, plays a role. Because we know there's going to be grant opportunities, there's going to be C B D G opportunities. All of this was put together before we realized we were going to get $15 million that we can use for infrastructure, right? That we now know will come, so that might impact what you see in May because we can probably have conversations about shifting some projects, especially on the utility side, since we can use some of that $15 million for utility projects, to move more projects through. And so there's all of these things that have just happened in the last few weeks that will impact it. But anyway, great point, though, nonetheless.
Okay, so next after that, on project number seven, we're showing Crestwood Phase 3 Reconstruction. That rounds out the, the three phases.
Did you skip Dairy Road?
No, we just talked about Dairy Road, yeah.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
So again, so, so on Crestwood Phase 3, I just wanted to highlight, you'll see on your project worksheet on, on page 18, we're, we're showing, this is, this is showing up on the C I P as additional funding. That's, that's additional funding of $900,000. That project was, was initially funded, I think, for three, a little over 3 million in, I think, 2021. And so the, the additional funds is, is needed for just the increase in, in, in cost, right? There's, there's a, a material cost and et cetera, so. Moving on to number eight, these are, number eight, nine, and 10, I'll just kind of touch on those quickly. That's, that's Airline, Mockingbird, and Anthony Road, those are Mill and Overlay projects. Again, that's, those are, were identified by the I M S study. And again, that's the same concept of being proactive and keeping, keeping the good streets good and preserving the life expectancy.
Haven't we done, haven't we done that stretch of Anthony Road recently?
Rio Grande to Lone Tree.
It was about five years ago. It was about five years ago, yes. And again, as we get closer to it, you know, that I took a lot of this information off the IMS. And if we get in there and find out that, hey, that road's in great shape, the base is good, we can put a seal on it and lower that, you know. We're we're always going to be looking at every street, every aspect of it, of not just taking the data that we get, because sometimes there's there's other alternatives, as we know. So that's that's true, we just did it. But again, keeping that maintenance up, keeping that maintenance up.
Well, these things are supposed to be 10 years or longer. As you just said, seven years.
Let me go through kind of a a street aspect.
It's okay, I've I've I got it. Unless somebody else wants it.
Again, I think if you if you look on that project worksheet, just to just to add to that, that was on Anthony Road 21, you'll see the PCI score on the bottom right-hand corner, the the pavement condition index that was identified by IMS. And I think in, not only will you see that score on the right-hand side, but in the description of that project worksheet, it'll it'll identify the post-PCI score in terms of if after we do this project and we do the mill and overlay, what will that what will that PCI score be on beyond, you know, post the the construction?
I think the concern, I'm going to speak for Ms. Scott, if this was done five years ago, when we're at a score of 70, where were we after we did the maintenance five years ago? And how fast did we did that number drop over five years? Any clue?
That's something, and that.
What did what did we do to it five years ago?
We we added, we redid the base and redid the subgrade in that section. My belief is part of that reason why that that grading is so low is, again, it's got the open ditches on the side, and if they see any cracks, that lowers that score a little bit. I don't think, again, I look at that road and say, does it really need a mill and overlay? They really emphasized on their IMS report, mill and overlays, because that is a good bang for the buck. But again, look at it specifically and see, is it, as Jesus said, do we have to mill and overlay the whole thing? Can we do a portion of the port repair or or mill and overlay, and then the rest, we could put the seal in on it?
Not sure that fully answers your concerns or your questions, but we'll take it as a homework item and look more into the specifics of that project.
Well, if the grading is because of an open ditch, you can't do anything about that.
Right.
Partial.
I mean, you could, right?
Yes, you could.
You could always, you know, curb and gutter it and do all sorts of things, but then all of a sudden it turns into a much bigger project, right?
Correct.
Is that road part of the Lone Tree drainage? Because it's right there on the edge of it, Lone Tree Acres.
That is going to be connected.
It's not, it's not part of the neighborhood, per se, but it is right next to it.
Yeah, it's the road that the neighborhood comes off of.
Yeah, that connects to it, yeah.
Okay. Moving forward, number 11, 12, and 13, those are those are utility projects. These were identified by engineering as as critical projects, so that's why they're on this list. This is this first year for those three projects is is the design phase. 14 is a 16-inch high-service connection at Main Street and Vine. Engineering basically said this is this is a will add a redundant feed to the north zone for from the water plant. 15, Regional Wastewater Clarifier Project. This is this is a a basically a five-year project, we're looking to do design in the first year. According to Ken, this the clarifiers have been in service since the late 70s, early 80s, so so we need to look at those. And we're looking to take one down or replace one each year, there's four clarifiers.
What is 14 again? A high-service connection? Of what kind of service?
That'll probably make more sense, if it's okay with you, for us to talk about it when Ken talks about the Yuri the Yuri impact on our water system.
Okay.
Because that specific project is intended to help create a redundancy of water flow throughout the system. And so it'll make more sense once we talk about it under Ken's presentation later, if that's okay.
Sure, that that also told me what utility we were doing the higher.
Oh, yeah, water, yes.
Thank you.
Number 16, this is the this is a Main Street Sanitary Sewer Line Replacement. This is from Yopon to Mockingbird. Again, this is a a a critical, a critical project. According to engineering, we're having to, we're having to pump this line what daily, right? So so this is a this is a very critical project. Number 17, this is a this is the Power Secure Generators. This one happens to be at the wastewater treatment plant. We've decided, or we've identified the the funding that needed to to go ahead and and purchase those generators. That basically would free up our $150,000 a year of of what is our lease payment, I guess, on those generators?
Lease payment.
And then on top of that, that allows us to, well, increase our cash, but also recoup the money that Power Secure pays, ERCOT pays, I believe, right?
Finance guy, I love it. Basically, as you recall, we leased two Power Secure generators. That's costing us about $150,000 annual lease, which includes the net from ERCOT programs and everything else. It's not a final decision as to we're going to do it, but it'd be nice to do that, because it'll create us saving $150,000. In addition to that, we get about $50,000 additional cash flow from the ERCOT program itself. So it just keeps growing your cash capability for your CIP program, okay?
We're in essence, we're in essence leasing them until we pay them off and own them, and we're simply saying, let's just buy them outright, so that we can use that money for something else and maximize the revenue that we get through the ERCOT deal.
So.
You should have just stayed sitting down.
As long as we can afford it, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Number 18, Tanglewood Utility Street Reconstruction. This is, this is on page 28 of your project worksheets. And this is what should be Phase One, which would be the design in 22. This particular project, this this particular project is touching teakwood, beechwood, and maple wood. And I've I've, we've identified those streets as being the 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 worst streets in that neighborhood as far as the PCI score. We drove, we drove the streets, put our eyes on them to determine which ones were in in the worst shape. So that project not only includes, you know, street reconstruction, but also utility construction as well.
Would you, do you, would you say you agree that those are the worst streets?
You know, I don't know the names of them, but I know that when you're driving around in there, it's pretty obvious which are the worst.
Okay.
They are the worst.
Yeah.
Well, if if, you know, at some point from now until May, you know, you feel that that's not accurate?
Teakwood, beechwood, maple wood.
Let us know. We're trying to tackle the worst ones, you know, right off the bat.
Yeah.
And that's something that I want to point out, that IMS report was a cost optimization, okay? Though teakwood and beechwood weren't even in there. However, when we drove that neighborhood, we said, whoa, we 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 can't go do tanglewood and linwood, those are those were considered to be mill and overlaid, and just not do anything to those other ones for for an additional five years. So we, again, took those, that whole IMS report and didn't just say, okay, that's what it is. We looked at it as a whole, took it upon the neighborhoods, the streets that they selected, and kind of revamped it to where it fits with our citizens' needs.
Okay. And I will drive them, I'm sure you will too.
Well, and teakwood is a major exit interest.
Right, but they're some of those, like, smaller, lazier streets that are just horrible.
Right. So moving forward, we have, and again, these, the Tanglewood, College Park, Bonner, these were all projects that were on the 2019 CIP as well, so that's why they're still on this list, they're obviously in dire need of of repair. So again, College Park of Bonner, that's designed in 2022. So we move down to 21, that's on page 31. This is the expansion of our environmental office on Southwestman Jordan. This project consists of a of a prefabbed or pre-engineered building with slab-on-grade building. The intention there is to is to bring the make the building look just like the existing buildings that are there with a stone facade and whatnot. This allows the director to be in the same facility as the rest of his his staff. 22 is a citywide street lighting LED project. This is a program that we're wanting to get into with the AEP in terms of identify, or excuse me, in terms of replacing all the streetlights in Victoria, starting on the south side. This is a this is a five-year project, we're phasing out, we showed 250,000 funding for each year.
And Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you've been very involved with this one, but this is solely replacing existing lights?
That is correct.
Separately, we're undertaking a process to identify where light is needed. The city is very dark, I mean, there there's really no way to to say it, right? I mean, the city's very dark, we noticed it right off the bat when we moved here and just started being familiar with everything. It's just very dark. There are many parts of our community that should have streetlights that do not have streetlights. And so there's going to be a separate effort to try and identify where those voids are.
That is correct. And that's, that study is called a photometric study or analysis. So essentially, it's a satellite view of the entire city, and it tells you where the dark spots are. So with this particular program, we're looking at with this CIP request, is replacing the existing lights with LED lights. And that will, that's part of the effort to improve quality of life in our neighborhoods, make them safer as well. Because yes, the city is fairly dark, especially in some of the south side neighborhoods. So so that's it's a two-phase approach, so the next phase will be the photometric study that will tell us where we have the dark spots.
Mike, I also wanted to bring up that sometimes in the older subdivisions, like in ours, you can walk down the street, you see the light, but the trees are are blocking the view, so if they could also take that up and see if maybe we could cut the branches or something, not tear off the tree, but, you know, just kind of make the streets brighter, because the lights are there, you know, but.
They're just being obstructed.
Would AEP be responsible for that? Like, is that even anything that they do? Because let's recall that technically the streetlights are owned, most of them, owned and maintained by AEP. So do they do that?
They they will rely on us to trim the round, because it's not an emergency, such as around an electrical line, they will rely on us to trim them, so we just, we're going to have to make it.
Do we?
We do, and periodically, when the citizens call, but we haven't done a neck, a citywide tour of the entire city to go look at all the trees. And we can do that.
Well, I think that's a great idea, and so I think we should look at seeing more or less how much we would need to budget and maybe just hire a contractor to take care of it for us? And get in some kind of routine schedule for that?
That could really change things.
So let's just take that as a homework item and look into that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It makes sense to do that before the before you do the study, right? So obviously, you know where where the lights are needed. 23 is a sidewalks around O'Connor Elementary and Strowman Middle School. This is a a a project that we're looking to get a grant for. This this will add sidewalks, the initiative is to add sidewalks around the around schools, to and from schools, so.
And this is part of the safe routes to schools, because we want to make sure that the children, that they walk to school on sidewalks, because right now they are, some of them are walking on the street. So so as part of the state's safe routes to school initiatives.
Which is a grant program that Katie Connolly, as our new grants administrator, is very involved with, so I see you over there, you know, raising the roof.
So the membes, are there other criteria as well, or is Leary Lane another one that's a possibility for that?
It's further down there. It's in another year, it's in another year.
Why? We've been talking about Leary for a lot longer.
Leary Lane is next on the list.
Okay.
But if the question is, could that program fund something like the Leary Lane sidewalk project? Yes. Realistically, you know, we can't, you know, apply for everything through the grant, but hopefully we get better and and do it on an annual basis. Y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've ever applied for that grant program.
We did apply one year for the Leary Lane sidewalk project.
And didn't get it?
They kicked it out quick. It involved a little more than sidewalks, because we had to do, at that time, the drainage and things, but.
Okay, well, we've never received it.
They want shovel ready.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. I think Katie, did you want to add anything? I thought I heard your voice. Now you're good? Okay.
Okay, so moving forward, project on the list, 24, this is the University of Houston, this is the Ben Wilson Project. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but these aren't not our funds, right? This is just on the list.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, University of Houston. And then we have the Leary Lane sidewalk project expansion. This project here, again, sheet number 34, got moved up there on to 22, so I think we're going to start moving forward with identifying the easements that are needed for that project, et cetera, and and moving forward with that one in 22, so.
We don't have time to go through every single year at this pace.
Yeah, I know.
So.
Yep, so, okay, so then quickly, as we do that, a lot of these projects, we're going to get into these other phases, right? So so now we've talked about a lot of projects, but then as I go down the list, again, you're going to see, okay, now we're in Phase Two Utility Construct, or excuse me, Utility Construction, so so I'll move a little bit more quickly. First couple, well, again, Mill and Overlay Project, that's Country Club, Mill and Overlay from the Verrill to McGruder, that's tied into a a project number 38, where you see the sanitary sewer line replacement. We'll have to coordinate those two projects together. Again, we go into the residential street maintenance program for 23. I believe there's Castle Hills West, that's the one where we have Hawthorne, King Arthur, Lammerack, et cetera on there. Those are all mill and overlays. Dairy Road, excuse me, Spring Creek Reconstruction, that is remain to Country Club. 29, we have, this is the Dairy Road Construction, street and utility construction here, we did the design in 22. And then the next four projects, 30 to 34, that's, again, mill and overlay projects identified by IMS.
Can you, I know we're trying to speed up, but can you slow down a second? Because I'm I'm still trying to find the page with the mill and overlay for 23, and now you're moving into 24.
That would be in your book, that is page 36.
Thank you, because I just want to look at them real quick and maybe a few other people.
Absolutely. Yeah, we transitioned over to fiscal year 23, we probably could have been a little more clear on that.
Oh, okay, there, finally. Because it sounded like he was going into 34, or into 24, so.
So right now, we we're on probably page 40, that's East Larksburg, Larksburg? And again, Lark Larks Larksburg, John Stockbauer, Delmar, and Miore. Those four projects, again, mill and overlay.
What page is that for 20?
Which which project specifically?
I found the ones on 36, what's the corresponding one for the next year?
The ones on 36 are fiscal year 23.
Okay. Is that where, is that as far as you got? I I thought I heard him moving into 24.
So so currently, right now, we're in fiscal.
We're running through these individually by fiscal year, and so we're in fiscal year 23.
Thank you.
He had moved ahead, but we went back to the street item.
That's what I heard when I was leaving. Go ahead, thank you.
So let's start back over on at the residential street program. So let's start back over on, at the residential street program, which is page thirty-six on your worksheet. So again, on the right-hand side there, you'll see the nine or ten or so projects, street projects that we have allocated for twenty-three, and those all equal up to roughly three million dollars. And I'll just name them off real quick. Queen City, Deer Chase, Murray Street, Cameron Church, and then we go into Castle Hills West, King Arthur, Hawthorne, Buckingham, and Lamorak. So moving forward, next project on the list is Spring Creek Reconstruction. And that's on project worksheet thirty-seven, if you need to look there. Dairy Road Reconstruction, that's the construction, we did the design in twenty-two, so in fiscal year twenty-three, we're doing, we're doing the reconstruction. East Larksburg, Larksburg Millen overlay, that's from Navarro to Placido Benavides. John Stockbauer Millen overlay, that's Salem to Mockingbird. And then Delmar Millen overlay, that's Houston Highway to Rio Grande. I believe Ken mentioned that's one of the, one of the collector streets that we're going to have the consultant do his analysis on, on the subgrade. Miore Lane Millen overlay, that's Sam Houston to Stockbauer. And then we move into wastewater treatment plant, clarifier project. Again, this is pulling, this is the five-year project where we, where we're replacing each of the four clarifiers, one per year.
I have another question.
One of the things, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to use this as an example to highlight another good, great feature of this document. So if you're looking at page forty-four, which is the one that shows the clarifiers, you'll notice at the top right that there's a section for operational impact. And so, one of the neat things about our process now is that it very specifically accounts for ongoing operational expense. So you'll see that for the clarifier project, you'll see that Emino Impact on the top right of a thousand dollars. And that way, you know, we're being very transparent and thinking proactively by just the nature of having the form. Well, what's the ongoing budget impact of this specific project? And that way, there aren't any surprises to anybody, you know, down the line. So just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
Back to building streets. How do you Millen overlay of Miore from Sam Houston to Stockbauer?
Okay, I knew, I was hoping that would come up, actually. That, of course, y'all know that's concrete street, and that was one of the advantages of building concrete streets. We know that sub base, we know that road is in just solid. You mill the outside edge, maybe eight feet from the, maybe two foot from the curb, from the edge of the gutter, you mill that down, gives it an edge for the hot mix, and then you can put about an inch and a half overlay over it, and you're good to go. Smooth road, quiet, it's a great process. One thing, while I got everybody here and I'm thinking of it, one of the next steps you'll see, which is important as part of the management of it, is Todd will be working on a letting schedule. Once we get twenty-two kind of locked in, you're going to want to see, when are these projects going to go, when are you going to see them in front of council? What time? What's the timeframe for bidding, for advertising, to get it before you, so you can see the award date of these? That'll be the next step, and that's an important step that we'll be working on next to get you, okay, where are we with these projects in twenty-two?
And I think one thing the city manager wanted us to do was to provide you quarterly update on where we are with the CIP. So that's one of the tasks for Todd, is to present to you on a quarterly basis as to where we are.
One of the benefits of thinking proactively about the letting schedule too, though, is to think through, I've verbalized and we've discussed that we can do a better job of telling our own story, right? You know, we obviously invest in streets every year, but people don't know about it. For example, just in the last couple of months, council approved, you know, North Heights Phase Six. We approved the Seal Coat Program. Neither were picked up by the media. We had to issue our own press release through our own newsletter this week to try and do our part to educate the public on the actions council took related to investing in streets. And so, one of the things that we know we can also be better at is spreading that out throughout the year, so that the items that come to council related to street aren't just in the winter, or just in the spring. We want to make sure that there's something coming to council every two or three months, and especially now that we're adding Millen overlay, that should make it a little bit easier to do that. But that way, the public perceives the reality, right, which is that we are constantly working on streets. We just need to say it out loud, we need to hopefully get our media partners to help us spread the word, and the more often that we bring items to council, the more opportunities for you and everybody to pick up on it.
One of the things I wanted to add real quick was, you know, I think the goal was to, maybe not necessarily go through each individual project worksheet, but if you're looking at the fold-out sheet behind each tab, so that that's the colorful spreadsheet, we can kind of go down that list, and then if you feel we need to get into more detail, then we can identify which project that is, and then we'll go to the worksheet and then have more discussion. So this is kind of to help it move along a little faster.
Did you finish going through fiscal year twenty-three, or where are you?
I have not. We're in, we're, right now, we're on thirty-five.
Which is?
So thirty-five is going to be the Tanglewood Utility Street Reconstruction. This is the, this is the utilities portion of that project in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Now, have we just dropped the other streets out, though? I know by focusing on those three, that's all well and good, and I get that, but that's now the only thing we're looking at.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Are those the only streets in Tanglewood in this five-year plan?
Yes, per the IMS study, yes.
Okay.
It captures a little portion of Tanglewood Street as well, but, so it's four streets, but just one block of Tanglewood Street.
So now, we need to start asking the address of the people that are complaining, to make sure, when we tell them where we're going to redo Tanglewood, that we get that straight.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, understanding, you know, where somebody lives becomes even ultra-critical, right? So for example, in Kingsville, when the city set up a street user fee and a street maintenance program and everything, the objective was to develop a program where somebody could go online, literally type in their address, and it would populate, you know, well, your portion of the street is scheduled for, you know, Seal Coat, you know, in 2022, or, you know, or whatever. Or maybe the answer is not applicable, right? Or whatever it is, right? But when you, when you do develop a program that is very block-by-block in nature, it does further emphasize the need to have the level of data to be able to adequately respond to inquiries. And that's a whole other layer that we're not even, you know, figuring out yet, but cities that have programs that are, you know, more robust, which is where we're headed, you know, already there to that level of degree of data.
Todd, I think that meets you.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. By next week, thank you. One quick comment on Tanglewood, since you mentioned it, just for full transparency, you know, we've been having conversations too internally about, you know, what is this, why do we always, why don't we bid out everything together, right? You know, we bid out utilities in one year, and then streets in another. And most communities, they just bid everything out all at once, right? And so, we've become, we've gotten into the practice of thinking almost like it's impossible for these things to happen at the same time. Pros and cons, right, to that approach, but think of how we do it now, right? We pay for somebody to go do the utility work, which at the end of it includes patching the street, and then one year later, we go in and tear up that patch and the rest of the street to get it fixed, versus just having everything done at the same time. Now, we used to do it that way, from my understanding, or at least had done it, you know, in the past, but there was the thought, and at the time, it was backed up, to be determined if it's the lack of it, that it would save us money by separating it out, because if you did bid them out together, you might get a street contractor bid on the project, who would then sub out the work to a company to do the utility work and add a markup, you know, to that. But we haven't really tried that in a while, and so we may try that with this specific Tanglewood project, and, because currently, it's got the utility portion being in twenty-three and street in twenty-four, this project might be the perfect opportunity for us to just give it a shot and see what we get if we bid those two things out together. And maybe see if what they've experienced in the past continues to hold true, that it's more expensive doing it that way. But anyway, so, you know, those are the types of conversations that we have, you know, internally, trying to really figure out what's the best bang for our buck, is there a better way? And so, just want to be transparent that we've used this project as an example of that.
As long as we don't end up with somebody that paves the streets first, and then does utilities second, which is what used to happen, and another reason they separated it.
And then before they, they tear up the street, they stripe it, right? Yeah, it's all backwards, right? Yeah. Anyway.
So I guess, would it be safe to say that, you know, we're on project number thirty-five right now, there's ninety-eight of these? Is this something that, you know, council would take home with them, you know, review this list, and then touch base with myself, or Seuss, or whoever, in terms of, have any questions or clarification on each individual project?
Todd, I'm looking through the list. Explain to me about the Riverside Golf Course green renovations.
Yep, I'm glad you brought that.
Phase one and two.
Right, I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, there are a couple of projects we probably still need to highlight. So yeah, the Riverside Golf Course project was, there was a, it was a USGA study that was done, and so identified that our greens were our, I guess, subpar. And so, they're not draining, the drainage underneath the greens, the subgrade isn't, it's, it's got a lot of, I guess, the word I'm looking for is, it's just not, there's supposed to be a certain amount of sand below that subgrade, or below the greens, and so it's not draining properly, and so it's creating a lot of fungus, and the greens are holding water, and so they're not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we did that a long, we rebuilt the greens a long time ago, back probably twenty-something-plus years ago, and that's the first time I've ever heard of, really, you got to redo a green? And they're expensive, so it's...
I noticed that.
There's a time. And I was shocked back then how expensive they were. I choked, and they are.
Trying to figure out how many rounds of golf does it take, based upon that investment?
Right.
And opportunities for tournaments and hotel stays, and I understand that. I choked a little bit on that and didn't know how many greens that was. It's set up in two phases, and if this is done, do, and I saw the timeframe, it's anywhere from four to six months, possibly when you start to finish of that, do we have temporary greens set up so that the golf course can continue to run during that time as well?
Yeah, the answer is yes-ish. And I'm sure Jason's about to just correct the heck out of me right now.
That's why they're all here.
Yes.
So, so just to touch on a question that you had, how long will it take? It'll take about four to six months. That's going to be, you know, mobilization coming in, redoing everything, and then planting the grass, and then having the grass take. So that's going to be part of it. We could look at doing it all at one time and shut down the entire course and do the full eighteen, or we can look at phasing it out like we're doing, like we put in there for this project, and if we were to phase it out, we would look at doing the front nine or the back nine first, and then vice versa on the, on the second phase of it.
Do all eighteen greens require this? I'm sure that there are certain greens that have a bigger fungus problem, and I haven't been out there, I'm sorry, I will go out and play. But that was my question. And again, like these roads where we're not doing wholesale, every road needs something. We're looking specifically at, maybe this road has worse problems, same thing with the greens.
Yes, that's a good, that's a good question. I would say majority, 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 can get that out there, of them would need this reconstruction. One of the things that the USGA representative told us is that even if you do it year-to-year, you have those differences in grasses, differences in how they grow in, but that he would recommend redoing all of the eighteen. All of the samples that he took of all of the greens, majority of them came out that same way. We just had a lot of compaction, there's not really much sand in there, and it's just, it's creating problems with water retention and fungi.
And so, just from a biological standpoint, if you do the front nine first, or the back nine first, I just, is there a way to keep the fungus from spreading from where we haven't fixed it yet to where it's already fixed, but here comes a ball or a shoe?
Yes, ma'am. And part of the, part of the problem is where we're getting the fungi from is from the drainage, and that's all, it all has to do with the irrigation. We, you know, we have the irrigation out there, but the drainage isn't appropriate, and so it's not draining appropriately and not adequately, and so we're just having a lot of standing water, thus, we're having issues with the greens. We have standing water in one side of the green, but on the other side of the green, where it's draining really well, we have to water that. So we're having an issue, because we have to water that area, and then it all trickles down to the area that holds the water. So we're just creating continuous problem with that fungi.
And it's all in the, and it's all in the design of the green, right? Because you want to design them with the proper slopes and everything to be able, for them to hold sufficient water to actually be green, but not have any water ponding. And right now, it's like we're experiencing the extremes of, you know, some areas can't hold enough water to remain green, and then they puddle on the other side of the green, and it creates the fungus, and so it's just...
So they're not green either?
Yeah, some of them are. They spray paint them.
I was going to say, we have spray paint for that.
But let me say too, that the USGA report looked at the entire golf course, and the response from the staff, the USGA staff, was that our golf course is excellent. The only thing that, the only issue was the greens. So, so the feedback from them was that we have an excellent golf course for our size, and that we just need to focus more on the greens.
Would it, and I don't want to get into the golf course management, that's not my, my job, because it's a two-phase, or it's at least nine holes during a phase, cutting down that for a half a year, particularly the very, very good golfing months that it would take of that, is it worth looking at putting in temporary greens for a portion of time right in front of that green while it's reconstructed? So there's a full eighteen holes versus nine holes, which would back up play and possibly lose some of the momentum from the golf course that's going on?
Yeah, the, real quick, though, the problem is, assuming people were good at golf, that'd be perfect, right? Because they would hit the ball to the temp green without interfering with the green that you're trying to grow grass, right? Problem is, we don't play golf very well, so even if we put a temporary green, we're likely to hit the ball into the area where you're trying to...
Then we don't understand what good greens are. And then you're fine to play on a green with poor undulation.
Yeah, anyway.
If I may, a couple of comments. I do play golf, and prior years before the city took over...
Sorry, cool guy.
No, 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 seriously. There are temporary greens set up and everything else. It's not pretty, but there are set up, and I think Jason will agree to that, too. Second of all, as you recall, and I will get into eventually, and I think Mike mentioned it too, this is a limited document. I mean, as of today, this is the project you're seeing today. I mean, as of today, this is the project you're seeing today. But guess what? You've got a master plan coming down the road. Something else might pop up and say, hey, that might have a higher priority. So this is a discussion that we're going to keep on doing and you can see some adjustments as we go.
I just saw that, kind of choked on the million dollars.
All right, so I think we, I think we're good. I think you all have gotten the sense of the format, the flow. Obviously, when we meet one-on-one, we can continue discussing if you have any major issues. If you have any specific recommendations on shifting projects around or just whatever, let's have that conversation. Because ultimately, and if, Todd, can you fast forward on the PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
Just keep going.
Yep. So we'll just, you want to touch on this? This is a...
Yeah, go to the timeline right now.
Okay, yep.
Because ultimately, in May, council will make, you know, the decision about the CIP, just like you have every other year. So that that tells staff, okay, it's confirmed. This is the information we're going to input into the proposed budget. That we'll get into the calendar here in a little bit. So that's the process. I do want to, if you go back a slide, another slide. There were some projects that we know have been discussed in the past that we intentionally left out because there's a lot of question marks surrounding them. And that is one of the, one of the things that we want to try and improve by having quarterly conversations with you, is to get into the weeds of specifics. Because for example, everybody can agree that North Street needs reconstruction. But it makes it very difficult for us to adequately budget for that if we're not certain on, are the expectations that we include sidewalks on both sides? Is the expectation that there be, you know, a median? Is the expectation that they be bike lanes? Is the, you know, there's so many different things that, that impact that budget that it's important that we have conversations because we don't want to just assume. And so, and it's very expensive. So it's important to have that conversation to A, understand the scope, to understand the money, and then B, get a sense of phasing. Some projects are drainage related in nature and so those were intentionally left out so that we can allow the drainage master plan process to be complete. Because we do fully expect, and Gilbert will hit on it briefly when he talks about finances, there are, excuse me, there will be an opportunity to approach drainage projects the way that other communities do, that we don't. But Gilbert will touch on that. But that's why we left those out. And then if you go to the next slide, Mike mentioned that over 90% of the projects in the plan are streets and utilities. And as I've mentioned before, part of that is because we're not structured to really do anything else, right? You know, I mean, if, if we wanted to know how much it would cost to do this street from here to there, I mean, Ken's guys could give you a cost tomorrow. But if somebody says, hey, you know what, I want to change, you know, the layout of my building, nobody knows how much that's going to cost. And so we've, we're in the process of being better at having architects on board. And so you'll notice that a lot of the projects that are in conceptual phase, if you will, are facility in nature, that we do plan on having a better sense of once we finalize work with architects. You know, for example, we recently did the RFQ that is going to recommend an architectural firm that'll be at the next council meeting for the Fire Station Number One rehab. I mean, think about how long we've been talking about rehabbing Fire Station Number One. And so just, that's our reality. And so we now have a list of architectural firms that submitted through that RFQ process that we can tap into to do, be a little better at this. Public Safety Headquarters Building, for example, is something that's obviously a huge priority for you, huge priority for me. But we haven't been able to get that project to a point where it's realistic in nature and comes with options. And so this week, for example, we have finalized a proposal with the same architect that did the study in 2018, so that we can finally get back on that and bring forward to council some realistic scenarios and options on what that facility might be able to look like. And so that's the reason why you, why it's still very heavily tilted towards infrastructure because we're just in a better position to do those projects.
Before you go forward, would you go back one?
Yeah, absolutely.
The off-channel reservoir interconnect project, that's a project that I heard about before I came on council five years ago. I think most people here have heard that. We've gone through two public works directors since that was presented. But that's a project that's always struck me. I think there was some cost saving involved in the result of that. And that's one that I'd like us to not lose sight of and maybe take another look at.
Yeah, absolutely. And obviously, we could talk more about water when Ken gives his presentation.
You can go on, but this is a work session where we get to tell you stuff and so...
Yeah, no, absolutely. It wouldn't be any fun if you didn't say anything. So anyway, so that's it for that piece. Gilbert, I already went through that.
I just wanted to let council know that for the month of April, we are making ourselves available to give you tours of the project. So we cannot do it as a group because of COVID and the bus. But if you would like, one-on-one tours, staff can meet you on site and give you more description on the project, if you would like. Because again, we want you to have eyes on the project. So let's let us know during the month of April.
Okay. Mayor Pretem, your call. Do you want us to keep going or you want to take a break?
We can take a break. But I was going to ask you, Mike, could we have maybe two or three people? That way you wouldn't take up so much time on the staff?
Sure, we certainly could do that.
Okay, I think I would recommend that instead of just one person and have to make seven trips or six.
That makes sense.
Yeah, let's take a break.
Five minutes?
Five minutes is fine.
Okay.
About his contract.
No, I didn't.
Testing.
Testing, all right. So we're going to get started. If council members are, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Jeff, we can start back up. Oh, Dr. Young?
He's there.
He can hear, I think they can hear. Yes, Gilbert, that's exactly where you need to be.
That's right. I want to see how it feels to be tall.
I think you just grew about two feet.
That's right. Now I need to see how Thomas and Todd feel like.
He's getting up in the world.
Thomas saying, I can see you now. Sleep right there, it's fine. I got it.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and pick, and pick back up. If you want to follow along, Gilbert's portion of his presentation is also in that first tab, CIP PowerPoint. It's like halfway through it, it's page 19 of that presentation on that first tab.
Thank you. So a couple of words before I start. Jeff, you made it. You missed a great presentation. But anyway, this one's better, but don't worry about it.
That's why I came back.
Hey, no, but seriously, folks, I want to echo Mr. Gardens' comment and Mike's. And I've been here over a long time. I'm really, really impressed with this document. It's a first step up. As you recall, the other documents y'all got, the layout was a little different. And no, no, I'm not accusing anybody, but I think this is the way moving forward. And it's going to get better. Let me tell you, it's going to get better. I got the budget and finance team over here going to talk about how Open Gov is going to make this thing a little better and make Todd's live a little better. And everybody's less paper shuffling and everything else. Because hopefully, this will be all kind of electronically. And it being also information for the public to rely when these projects are coming out and everything else. So it'll be a great tool. Basically, I want to let you know, great product, staff did a great job. He paid, he paid me for that.
I got a Scotch coming for that.
Okay. Next comment. This is for Cheryl. I got woo. Let's see if I can do this. Show me the money, is that woo? I don't do a lot of woo, so you know my speech. I was going to put the video in there, but I said, nah, better not.
It should have been your picture.
I should have put Hesus' picture.
Yeah.
But anyway, I don't want to do that. All right, let me talk about agenda. I'm not going to keep this high level. You have two other presentations besides me. You got Open Gov, give you a little concept of what to expect from the budget side, future CIP project. Also, you got Hesus and Ken talking about Yuri. I have no idea what the Yuri stands for. Don't ask me, it could be nasty, I don't know what. But they got that presentation. You've got to live enough, it's 3:00 in the afternoon, so I want to make sure everybody's happy by Friday.
How many, how many, how many years you think someone got to be here to just say that stuff out loud?
Right? It's on TV later. Anyway, hey, real quick, I want to talk about the funding. I think everybody knows about it, I'm not going to spend too much time on it. What I am going to spend a lot of time is on the strategy because I'm excited about this five years and the coming years. Because the city really has a lot of flexibility coming and I'll explain that in a minute. And lastly, I want to kind of regroup from a high level of all the costs, all the funding, and what we're looking at at the bottom line. And how we're going to use debt and what we're versus pay as you go. I think you're going to be excited like I am, I hope. All right, as you well know, CIP, we get money from different sources. You got general fund transfer, you got environmental transfer, utilities. We got a tax out overpass transfer. I know she's coming over here with a hand-me-down deal, but it's okay.
Test, 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 test.
Test, test, test. It's not working? Okay, I got it. Miss COVID? You there? Hello? Testing, 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 testing. Perfect, thank you very much. And we got the text out overpass. Yeah, we got $9 million years ago, kind of trickled down. I'll tell you about it in a minute. We got Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation. I get more involved, I mean, details about it, but just want to refresh council's mind. In the past, we used to, you know, go out to Victoria Sales Tax, grab whatever we can from the, for CIP and kind of ignore economic development. Not ignore, but they don't have any cash left over to start planning out some future projects, strategies and everything else. This concept changed that whole viewpoint. I want to make sure it keeps a reserve there, a minimum reserve of a certain amount. And also have the capability to do incentive programs or buy land or do something very concrete. Not a million dollars, $2 million. I'll get into a little more. Grants. We got some state and federal, like y'all talked about. And also we got University of Houston, $7 million, you know? No chump change there. CEOs. Of course, y'all know that. It's levy, use property taxes, or we can pledge some other revenue. No elections is required as of today. I don't know what's going to happen up there in Austin. Jeff, you might know more than I do. But they got a bill in there to change that, but hopefully they don't. Or you can do a combined tax and pledge revenue. Of course, you know the utility revenue bonds, which is generated by our utility department, water, wastewater operation, there is a pledge revenue. You pledge that revenue, no elections required. And of course, last, this is a different look. I know you know about the construction fund. As you recall, when I budget, submit the proposal, we put the money into the construction funds, streets, utility and everything else. Our intent is change that a little bit. I want to put, of course, next year's funding and seed the next year's, a year from now funding. So you have that money there. So you're not go, okay, let's go back and see what we add. So you have some money that's seeded there. Does that make any sense to y'all? I'm not sure how we can do that. Not only that, I think back in November, we talked about stabilization, what do you call it?
Self-stabilization.
That maybe there's some fundings left over. We can scrape it off, send it over to this other fund where we can use it for other projects or other CIP programs. Remember that? So I've tried to put that in, involve in this process too. Okay, next slide. Now this is the fun part. One of the things I want to do, I want to create a CIP where it's flexible, that you can change things around without any problem. Want me to add that besides this one? You can change timeline. You don't want to do the golf thing, we can move it down to three years down the road and move things different. Or keep in mind, you know, you got other master plans that are being developed right now. Something might kick in, might subsume that one or move it down the road. So it's very flexible, okay? Same thing you would say, oh, I want that 25 project, over in '23. We can shift things around, okay? I'll tell you how we can do that. Again, on the sales tax side, I wanted to keep one-year minimum fund balance. That's approximately close to $5.5 million. Yes, ma'am, I need to drink some water there.
Love it, love your microphone.
I know. Put that thing over it. It's Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation. I like to keep, you want my mask on maybe?
No, no, you can put a mask on the microphone.
Oh, it's okay, it's just my...
You got to hold it close.
I know, there you go. Nobody touches this anymore. Okay. What I want to do is try to maintain a minimum fund balance of one year of reoccurring. What's that reoccurring number? Close to $5.5 million, close to $6 million. In addition to that, I'm assuming that, because what I do, when I do these things, I do a five-year projection on Sales Tax Development Corporation, also do the budget. And within those five years budget, I'm assuming $2.5 million reoccurring all the time for incentive program. So you take that $2.5 and a $5.5 fund balance, at any given time, you got $8 million to throw somewhere if you need to do it. Does that make sense? In the poor, as you well know, we didn't have that capacity because we always stripped it and used it on some other project. One of the basic principles now is to change that concept. Is that understood? I didn't mean that, but understood. Anyway, I just want to make sure you understand where it's coming from. Of course, we want to comply with off-fund balance and working capital policy. Of course, leverage all maximum, all type of grants and not for profit like we're doing with University of Houston. All right, this is where it gets cool. CEO utility revenue bond strategy. We would like to take our time and try to develop the CIP program over the next five years. In doing so, we want to let it mature. Have your other master plans come in, start accumulating these other new projects. And then by year two, three, you know, you got a pretty good solid, go back to Mr. Gardens' point. We don't get to a point like in '25, we think we're going to do this. And guess what? That has changed several times throughout the process. We won't get at a point where we got a pretty good idea, this is a vision, this is a process we want to go with. So do we have a very good mature master plan where we can get these projects from? At the same time, it would create a more mature CIP program.
I'm just wondering, it looks like you're going towards, so we're not going to do any of these things that we've been talking about until we let things mature?
No, I think it's the opposite, right? So what we're trying to do is develop a program where we can do both things, right? One, develop a financing plan that actually, hopefully, at least from a better percentage standpoint, have us completing the projects that we're talking about in the outer years. But if something comes up, we have the ability to have the flexibility that he's talking about to add without having to sacrifice, right? Because right now, what we've done in the past is, you know, we say, oh, we're going to do X project three years from now. But then someone else pops up and there is zero flexibility in the money, which then causes projects to be moved out even further. And so we're trying to develop a program that has that flexibility so that we can do both things. One, honor as much as possible the five-year plan that we're talking about, but at the same time have some capacity to add things as master plans get completed, as priorities change, as, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's what he's referring to.
Okay, thank you.
And the way we get there is by letting some of these things, some of the existing debt mature, finish paying it off, you know, et cetera, et cetera. That's how you create that flexibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other big part of this deal, which I will get into later, is that it gives us time to the possibility of developing a funding mechanism for drainage, for storm drainage funding program strategy, okay? As you well know, like y'all... As you well know, like y'all saw earlier, there's about three, four, five projects of drainage that we're kind of holding off. We're going to have some capability from our utility side, I'll show you in a minute, that, hey, let's finish our drainage master plan. Let's go into a study that figure out how we want to generate some new revenue to create, to pay for these projects. But guess what? We're going to have some flexibility on utility side where we can scrape with some of that utility revenue, bring it over to the storm, to, to this project, and minimize the impact to any residents. Does that make sense? So in other words, instead of having, I'm throwing numbers out there, this is not true numbers, radio, TV. Say you got a $2 increase for the stormwater. Well, we able to move, say, a dollar a half on the utility side currently, because we're not using, because we don't need it right now, over into the stormwater, and maybe it's only cost you 50 cents to increase for the residents. But you remember...
Or it's flat.
Or it's flat, but remember, you got a residential and commercial situation. But my, my, our strategy is to minimize the impact on residents. Does that make sense? We get it more detail later. I don't follow this. No tax increase or utilities the first year, folks. I'm not going to promise you what's going to happen in '23, '24, '25, okay? Because things might change. The ability, I really like this. I think this plan will give you a chance to increase your bond rating, seriously. I'll show you that in a minute. Over the next five years, we're looking at 25 million dollars. It's total. And I think in '24, it's a larger one, 20 million, next year, five. Now, that's based on current assumptions now. When it comes to next year, it might be a little different. Or, as I'll show you later, I still got some capacity, maybe I should use cash and not sell bonds. So we still got time to balance that out. Revenue bonds are the same thing. Right now, we're looking at 15.4 out of 69 million dollar capacity. Imagine what you can do with that cash flow. If you're not going to sell bonds, but you generated that cash flow, ching, ching, let's throw it to the projects. Make sense? This is a bigger thing. Currently, right now, this program, on the CEO side, you still got about 99.9 million dollar debt capacity. From '23, '23, yeah, '23, '23, okay? That's awesome. You still got that huge credit card in your pocket, okay? You're not spending that money right now, no interest, nothing like that. Same thing on the euro utility side. Because think about it, when you're using the cash flow from the utility debt service, that's a one-time money. But once you start selling debt, it changed the whole story. But on the utility side, that's 86.1 million dollars. That's 186 million dollar debt capacity we have in credit card opportunities. So, you know, we like the concept, pay as you go versus debt. And we want to try accommodate everything as debt, as, as cash. But those that cannot really be paid with cash, you still got something to work with. I don't know if a lot of y'all remember before, we had capability of selling bio at 10 million dollars. We sold it, now you got nothing less. Here, one of the main concepts we like to have, every year, keep in mind what's coming down that pipe. Keep that flexibility there.
Gilbert?
I think you're like two slides down.
Is there an...
No, 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 I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
Is there an upper limit on what we can issue without an election?
No. Well, no. On a CEO?
On whatever it is that you...
Well, on the G, it is different. So if you issue a GO, you got to do an election.
Okay.
No matter the limit. If a CEO, you can do whatever you want, if you're brave enough. That's all I'm saying.
Right. There's no, there's no financial caps or minimums. It's more of a policy decision on whether you do a CEO or a GO. And in our particular case, you know, the practice has been doing CEOs, which is very common.
Right.
To do.
But in the past, we done five, 10 million dollar CEO, 15, 20, and, and, because that 20 consists of several projects, not one project. Okay? Any, any other thing before I move on?
CEOs are certificates of obligation.
Yes, ma'am.
GOs?
General obligations. Let me, okay, let's talk about the, the CEO bonds. I can't move this thing, James.
Yeah, that's one way to do it. You, if you're trying to point, you could use a laser in the, in the...
Real quick. It's a link. Real quick, I want to show. Remember back in December, our GO outstanding principal balance is dropping like crazy. That, ladies and gentlemen, gives us the flexibility. It's just sinking real quick. You have that capability to do anything you want to do right now, okay? I just wanted to show you that real quick and bring you back. Now, with that said, also in December, I showed you a graph that with Calipiler coming on, all these abatements coming off, and coming on to the tax row, assuming a growth rate over the next five, six years, I'm averaging about 1.5% on your tax price value. Not great, but it's there. With that, assuming we keep our tax rate as it is today, just to maintain it, we'll generate X dollar cash. You agree there? Okay? You'll generate, let's say you generate nine million dollars.
And to be clear, you're talking about the INS.
INS. In other words, I, I should, I, I'll get there in a minute. Okay. Your debt service to pay off that particular, you're going to say is 6 million dollars. So you got 6 million dollars to pay debt service. That means you got 3 million dollars left, or from the INS revenue, correct? You take that 3 million dollars and you go calling bonds. You start paying them off early, like you're paying off your mortgage. Does that, does that flow? So you're not, you're not, you're using the money we're supposed to be using that, but you're calling in bonds early. What does that do? For the next few years, it's going to create a 1.1 million dollar interest savings. Real interest. It's not you refinancing something, you're paying it off, you got that cash flow right there each, the following year. Over the next, over three, four years, you will have 1.1 million dollar increase in cash flow. And what can be done with that? Call in more bonds, or you can lower debt tax rate if you want to do that. One penny, 370,000 dollars. Guess what? So it's accommodating everything that we talked about months ago, about what we want to do with this capacity. We want to make sure we keep our capacity, be able to give the residents some decrease down the road somewhere. So we have that capability. Does all that make sense? And I know it's shaking heads. Okay. When we do something like that, I'm really encouraging to go do a redemption bond program. You're out there going out there, calling in bonds, paying it off, like paying off your mortgage. But when we do that, every time you do a refinance, you have to put a 10-year callable technically, because you want to assure that the bondholder, well, I'm not going to buy that bond if you're going to call them back tomorrow. They want to have some security. So usually, we put a 10-year callable on it. In other words, we can't finance it, we can't call it in, we can't do nothing. So that's why I'm holding off right now on doing any right refinances on CEO, because my savings is higher on a redeeming bond versus a refinancing bond. Does that make sense to y'all? Perfect. I'm trying to go a little fast, I'm sorry. It's about the utility revenue bond. Again, same, almost the same concept. We have implemented in the past a rate to pay for any bonds on the base. It would generate X dollars. In our case, it generates about 9.4 million dollars on the utility side for that service, okay? Now, you know that debt service is coming down. I don't need all that 9 million dollars. So what I can do, continue holding that rate the same, not affecting anybody's utility rate, have, still pay my debt service, take that other cash, and use it for CIP projects as a one-time. Does that make sense? And you don't lose that capacity at all. That's the sweet part about it, okay? But here, I do want to continue refinancing aggressively. So, bottom line, city continues the ability to still have the debt capacity of about nine, of about 100 million dollars. We pay our bond early, save interest, possibly reduce future interest, uh, tax rate, or increase other cash flow for CIP. Allow the CIP program to mature over the years, till you get to a point where we can really know what's going to happen down the road. You leverage the revenue bond debt cash flow to pay off, to do CIP for right now, instead of using bonds. You still with that, you still retain your debt capacity by 86 million dollars. That is sweet. Allows time for the cities to start evaluating, implementing a storm water drainage program in order to take care of some other drainage projects. I think it really is going to improve the city's financial position, even after I'm gone. And I really think that there's going to be some money eventually, at the bottom line, we can scrape off and send it to this other fund, so council can use it on some other projects or programs. Make sense? That's what's this five years. Next year, I might tweak it here and there. Real quick. Top graph is what I presented to you in December. Bottom graph is what we need right now. Next year, we still can ship that 54 million dollars earlier if we need to, okay? By not use, how?
No, because we're cutting up our credit cards, paying off everything, and not borrowing anything else.
And, and, and we don't know, and we don't know, and we don't know what we don't know.
So where's the 54 coming from? Because we're not issuing more.
All right, let me, let me, let me finish. And in '22, in 2022, let's go back to top graph. You see the 27 million dollars?
Yeah.
I had 27 million dollars. I don't need 27 million dollar debt, correct? I just need 5.4 million dollars. That will give me a cash flow of about 1.7 million dollars that I don't need to use to pay debt. So if I don't need it, I don't, all this debt keep moving out back. I keep the cash flow, but I use it for CIP projects. So, in '23...
Go ahead.
In '23, over here, originally, I need 17.6 million dollars, I just need 10 million dollars. Now, leaves me a cash flow of 2.3 million dollars. It's a cumulative, because that 1.7 will happen again next year. You see? Until I spend this money here on debt, then you're going to see these bars go up. If I don't spend it, all these bars will keep pushing back out to whenever I need it.
So in essence, the 54 came from pushing out the bars that you see as 27, 24, 17. Because these, these aren't cash flow numbers, these are debtish, these are debt numbers, right? So don't think that, you know, what we're getting is the difference between the 5 and the 27. That just means that we're not issuing the debt for that amount, which saves us the payment on that debt, which is a 1 point something million dollars that Gilbert's talking about. But to your question about where the 54 is coming from, is by pushing out what you see in debt capacity on the top graph that currently shows for the next few years, we're saying, let's push that out by doing what Gilbert described, which is instead of issuing more debt, use it to pay off existing debt, so it only makes that number greater. This is what also gives us the flexibility as we finish master plans and come up with other needs, to say, you know what? We might sit here two years from now, or even a year from now, and say, you know what? We actually need to issue debt, you know, in '23, or in '24, or in '25, or in '26, because now we recognize that we need to do, you know, the public safety building, or we need to do, you know, something else. Or something comes up with the, you know, with the parks master plan, or just in general. And that's where that flexibility comes from.
Really, it's great, it's from '24, '25, '26. I'm saying, based on our analysis and our CIP needs, we don't need debt right now. That right there is 12.7 million dollars, or an average of 4.2 million dollar cash that you have, okay? That we can go towards CIP.
Or in other words, it's kind of mind-boggling to think, right? Because this is the shift in how we've done stuff in the past. But the, the five-year plan that you just saw, that accounted for a significant amount of projects to be done in '24, and '25, and in '26, we're saying that to do the projects that you saw, we don't need to issue any additional debt in '24, '25, and '26.
Correct. And prior CIP programs, what we usually do, we show this, and say, well, we got 27, let's do 27 million dollars of utility projects. Do we need to do that right away? Anyway, it's just a change of philosophy. I know it's going to take time to, but it's, it's, it's meeting our needs, it's, it's, we're still achieving our objective, which project we need to hit. Okay? I'll keep on. Basically, this slide tells you...
Gilbert?
Yes.
You skipped, uh...
I skipped one?
You skipped GOs and CEOs. You went to the utility and...
Oh, CL, GO.
And I think it's important you talk about that.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that. Thank you for that. Here again, same philosophy. You got GOs and CEO. Back in December, I was, I laid out this scenario up here. This is your debt capacity. We didn't know when we need to use it, but this is what we had available. Basically, you know, the Calipiler's coming in here, you can see that. You still have 25.2 million dollar, million, Siri?
125.
125. See, I'm not used to those big numbers like that. We just do 5, 10, 20. Down the bottom, for the next five years, it's telling you, after, like Hesus mentioned, we only need, based on this analysis as of this year's program, you're looking at needing about 20 million dollars in 2024, and 5 million dollars in '25. Well, again, you have all of this, and you still can generate that cash. Use to pay this and pay off about 6.9 million dollars in debt. Pay off, not refinance. Paying off your mortgage, technically. Which equates to about 100, 1.1 million dollars. Now, that's a rough number, it could be higher, okay? Get this, this...
I was just going to say, and this would be the same explanation as the utility side, which is, you know, why you see 54 and 27 is because what you see on top, which was 40, now we're saying we don't need 40 in 2024, so you're just pushing that debt capacity out. But since you're finishing paying off some debt at the same time, that now balloons to 54 in that particular year versus the graph at the top that had it spread out over that same time period, right?
Yeah. The only difference here besides utilities is that when I come to you in the budget time, I'm going to have to tell you which ones I'm calling, so in order I can keep that tax rate the same level. That's the only requirement I need by the state, okay? But you would know that. But again, the sweet spot is at 1.1 million dollars over the next three, four years.
Are you showing us debt capacity just out of interest or out of curiosity? Or are you showing us debt capacity in terms of we might issue this debt? Because it sounds to me, you're just saying, gee whiz, we'd be able to do that, but we're not going to.
Let me make it, let me ask you a question this way, Ms. Scott. If the proposed project that Todd and everybody presented to you, with all this project laid out, it will require this type of debt capacity, 20 million dollars in 2024, and 5 million dollars in '25, if you want to do that CIP projects, okay?
Right.
Any given year, that can change.
Right. So we, we, we might, for example, a year from now, say, we need 10 million dollars for, you know, phase one of a public safety, you know, building. Well, we'd be able to have that conversation without changing anything on here. Right? It would just mean moving up when you issue debt. Now, that comes at a sacrifice per se, right? Because if you end up issuing it, you all, you, you know, you don't finish paying off as much as we're saying now, or whatever. But at least you have options, right? Or maybe there's another project that council says, you know what, we really want to do this project, and it's going to be 5 million dollars. Okay, well now, rather than telling you it's not possible, which is, you know, an answer you would get before, right? We would say, well, it is possible, but this is what it would look like if we did that. It would mean not saving as much money in interest, it would mean not paying as much debt, you know, ahead of time, and it would mean this, you know, over the next 10-year period.
Correct.
And so, as council, you have more flexibility to have conversations with us about it. Uh, and that's the whole intent of having this sort of robust process, right? And so our expectation isn't necessarily that, you know, you provide some of that guidance today per se, but just keep in mind moving forward that there's flexibility there. And at the end of the day, you're council, you're the policymakers of, of the body, right? And so we just simply want to make sure that you're educated, have the information... And so we just simply want to make sure that you're educated, have the information on where we stand. Um, and maybe you agree with us that yes, you know what, this path of trying to pay off as much debt as soon as possible for interest savings? Yes, that's great. Let's go that route. Or again, maybe a year from now, we say, you know what, we need to actually issue debt sooner. But at least if we did that, we wouldn't have to worry about sacrificing the projects that we're talking about.
But the important thing, the important thing is it gives us flexibility.
Right. Which, which you quite frankly haven't had before.
The important thing is what?
The flexibility. And, and so being in this, I guess, situation is new, right?
It is.
Um, because again, the conversation in the past is if you want to do something as council, well, you have to shift projects out or it's not possible. And so now we're saying, if you actually have something you want to do, we're saying we can make it happen without impacting the five-year plan, but it would impact the scheduling of this. But maybe that's a conversation you want to have.
Why should I be here tonight? I mean, y'all could have done this by yourself. Anyway, again, when I started this presentation, one of the key elements is to make sure over the next five years, we are developing a really flexible strategic plan that we can maneuver at any given time, basically. Today, you seen those numbers. Next year, things might change. You want a different project or nah, I don't want to sell debt. Okay, guess what? Things changes. That's all. But as of today, based on the program that was presented to you by staff previously, this is what needs to take happen, okay?
And as I mentioned earlier, just for Jeff's benefit, you know, it might even look different in May because when we finalized this plan, we didn't know we were going to have the fifty million dollars that we could use some of it for certain things.
He stole my thunder.
So, you know, so there's just a lot of things that are evolving. I'm sorry, Gilbert.
I know, I know, I know. It's okay. Okay, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to go through these? These are the bonds being proposed right now. Again, they can change, but right now, based on that plan, staff is coming up with this recommendation right now, okay? This is what I want to talk about. This is the top high level. I'm not going, you see all those pages you had there in the prior book? This is just a recap over the five-year timeframe. I'm not going to go through detail of it, but what I want to show you is that basically, let's see if I can do this right. We're going to have about a hundred and thirty-two million dollars over the next five years. And again, I'm conservative with this. We're going to have about a hundred and nineteen million dollars in project calls that were presented to you by staff, which means it leaves you close to thirteen million dollars left. Whenever you had that before. Right? What makes that happen? Right there, ladies and gentlemen, utility debt service capacity. We never, we had, we were capped out. We couldn't, we had to pay debt service. We never had that cash flexibility. Now you got that drop in your principal. You have that, you have that capability. Same thing on the GO side. Not only that, in that number, as Mr. Garza mentioned, I don't have fifteen million dollars from the American Rescue Plan. Is it called, is that, is what it's called?
Yes.
Right? Fifteen million dollars. And guess what? I know you read the paper, we're passing, we still got to figure it out, but one of the clauses that, don't ask me how they came up with this. We can use that money on water and wastewater, broadband, that's affected by COVID or not affected by COVID. So guess what? Let's use it, right? That's not in play. What happens if that is in play? Well, that changed this whole thing, but if I can't point then. Anyway, change your debt issue. Why issue debt then, right? Save that powder, get more cash, boom, more projects. Does it make sense?
Yep.
Excellent. Not only that, what makes this happen too, to over the next five years, we still got about eight million dollars without that fifteen million dollars, okay? Maybe next year, say, hey, let's don't sell debt. Let's use some of that money up and now sell eight million dollars of debt. Does that make sense? That means we got, we go redeem more bonds. So you have that flexibility. But I don't want to start doing that now until we know we got these master plans coming in and I want to see what are we looking at? We've got parks, drainage and everything else. The beauty part about this, sixty percent of this whole program, five years, is paid, is cash. Cash, folks. Thirty-one percent is debt and it can be reduced if you wanted to. And I still got about, what, oop, I went back. I still got about ten percent in cash left over if everything works out right. But what makes this happen too, in a different direction indirectly is, you heard it earlier, we changed our whole strategy, how we look at streets. We're not doing subdivisions. We're going out there, really picking what really needs to be fixed right now. And earlier I was doing this to Ken. We also go out there, use the cabeza. We don't want, just because it's, the report says that, you got a street that's over there, there's junk, you better pick it up. I don't care. So they did that. So changes that whole philosophy has given you opportunity to be more flexible. Second, the IMS, I think that's a good beneficial program to start with. It has helped out a lot. But anyway, in recap, you're in great shape. Great shape to get a bond rating increase possible. I know on the utility side, you're in great shape financially and you got a great deal to look forward to improving City of Victoria.
What's our bond rating again?
On our GOCO, we got double A plus.
Double A plus.
On utilities, I'm sorry?
What's above that? Triple A?
Triple A, yes.
Utilities were?
Utility double A minus. I can see, I'm not predicting, but I got feeling maybe that'd be double A plus. On the GOCO, you got some wind against you there. I don't know what's going to happen with the other entities around us. But if we were the only ones, I can see going up a notch. It's a good possibility, which is less interest.
Right.
Anyway, that's my story. I'll leave it there. Mr. Sue's, anything else? Okay. I think you're on.
All right. So next, next up, Wesley, you going to spearhead? And Laura?
Hey, Sue.
Yes.
I'm over here, but I would like to echo what you and Gilbert had mentioned about this document and specifically with the specifics in there, with the description and justification. And you, you talked about the estimated operational impact and everything that, that this document has is, is impressive. Um, it's a huge change from, uh, past. Um, and so, thank you. I, you get, we're blessed with, um, departments that win awards all the time. This, I don't know if there's an award for it, but it's certainly award-winning worthy. I'll tell you that.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Staff deserves all the credit. Um, you know, capital projects are important to us and we're investing, you know, time, staff into it. And so there's a positive correlation there. So yeah, we're excited about it. Thank you.
Again, let's give.
Round of applause. There you go. Okay, take it away. Is, I don't think that mic's on. See, I had to turn it off.
Test, test, okay. All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. As part of the Finance Department's Fiscal Twenty-One Goals, we had set out to acquire a budgeting and reporting software which would streamline the budget development process. Uh, we also wanted to do a better job of taking council's feedback into consideration. And by being able to present a budget sooner, it gives us the necessary time to incorporate this, any of the feedback into the budget. We'd selected OpenGov as our vendor and you may recall back in the June budget work sessions, we had made a short presentation on that software. So today we just wanted to provide an update on how the implementation is going as well as what to expect in this year's budget process. So we've been in the process of implementing this software since October with our implementation team consisting of myself, Laura Gonzalez, Billy Lepp and Sarah Vazquez in the Finance Department. I don't have them up here, but, um, Wayland Kern in the IT department has also been a big help in the data integration side. And the work that he's doing is going to allow our accounting data to automatically import into OpenGov. And currently it's a, it's a manual process, but once that data integration piece is complete, it'll just be updated on a nightly basis. So we were able to get a little bit of a head start on the implementation process by developing our, our chart of accounts for import into OpenGov before our kickoff meeting in November. And once we had signed off on that, we began the manual process of importing the historical accounting data into the system, uh, which then allowed us to set up the department worksheets, which departments would then use to complete their initial budget requests. OpenGov led a, a training in January for all of the departmental users to go over the budget module. Um, this allowed us to go live in February for departments to begin keying in their budget requests, which were due the beginning of this month. So in essence, we were able to implement a new software, but still stay on the same timeline as we, as we have in, in prior years in regards to the budget process.
All right. Good afternoon. Council, as you may remember, last year's budget work session in June was the first time that a document was handed out. Thank you. Was handed out, um, for your review before the proposed budget document in August. Um, staff has been actively working to keep council apprised of budget development throughout the year. For example, you know, we heard the CIP presentation just earlier this afternoon, as well as the twenty thirty-five action items. That's been an ongoing discussion. So we're trying to actively keep the budget process ongoing as opposed to just waiting till, you know, August, once y'all see the proposed document. Um, the budget work session document, that was a very, very manually intensive for staff to develop in a short period of time. The document included additional budgetary information the council had requested. Last year, we gave three hard copies. As you can see, we brought them just so y'all, in case y'all forget how big the documents were. They're here on the table. We passed out something in June for the budget work sessions, you know, our draft budget as well as the presentations. Thank you. I have my assistant up here today with me. We passed that out in June as well as the proposed budget in August and then, you know, our final adopted budget, which is what Gilbert's holding right now. So there was a lot of paper, a lot of manual work that was done through that process. With OpenGov, with OpenGov, it will streamline the process so that the information is stored in a centralized database. So this year, what you will see come June for the budget work session, this is kind of just a sample of the budget stories, which is, this is a finance budget in brief is what we're calling it. And we've just worked up our finance department one. All the same information's going to be there. You know, you're going to have our department message, our organizational chart, personnel descriptions, just high-level information, mission statement, our goals and objectives, program updates, and of course, here's the financial data. Your budget information recurring one time, total budget, new programs, some metrics, and then just kind of going on, looking into the future. So all the information that we provided that was new last year, you will be seeing again this year. It'll all be via OpenGov though.
And so each department would have the same structure and setup is what we're trying to convey to you. So it may not be like a traditional, um, PowerPoint presentations like we've done in the past. It'll kind of be just a little more like you just saw, and obviously it'll be more filled in, right? But, um, we wanted to just give you a sense of, of that. And the system literally auto-populates that-ish.
It'll, it'll auto-populate.
To look like that, right? So that's the benefit. And so it removes a lot of the manual, uh, components that have occurred in the past. And in the past, I just want to give this very specific example, but in the past, um, we, staff would, um, copy and, well, not copy and paste, but they would download information from the software that we use, input it into Excel, send it to staff. Staff would fill out the Excel document with their budget requests, send it back to finance. Finance would then take that Excel and upload it into a different format into the, the system. And so it was just, a lot can happen, right, in that process? Um, and now, I mean, there's none of that. They just go to the link, they just input it and, um, I hope they all thought in the back, in the back, I hope they all thought it was very smooth. I hope, yeah, they're clapping and stuff.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've had a lot of positive feedback, excited about, I know, I didn't hear anyone clapping though. I know I've had the positive feedback about it.
Anyway, carry on.
I'm not too sure.
What really, really, really you gain out of the system too as well, like Mr. Garza was talking about is that those changes can be really implemented, we're live and all of a sudden, boom, it goes through the whole process without us doing a manual operation, got to print it out, re-add and doing all that. All that is right there. That's why it makes it so efficient. So in June, what you're going to see here is going to be the same document with what are changes you want in August. Or we can just change it in August and just drop it in numbers, see what it looks like, okay?
And we can easily drop it on a website, online, and so anybody can just, you know, and see what you just saw.
So we can do a lot of what ifs? Okay.
Uh, yeah. That's another budget workshop, but yeah.
Yes.
Laura or Wesley, carry on.
Okay. So the next piece of it is going to be the, um, the proposed document that you'll get in August as well as our adopted, adopted budget document. Now, our plan is to do this, um, in an electronic format. I know, um, in the past we used to get in the big binders, but we would like to keep it electronic. And just to give you an idea of what that's going to look like, I promise this is okay. All right. So this, this is obviously not the City of Victoria. It's not going to look exactly like this, but I just wanted to give you an idea of just high level, how you, how you can navigate through this, through this electronic document very efficiently. Right. This, and this is going to be a budget book built by OpenGov. So you have here your, your bookmarks, um, which are really just going to cover the more major sections. It's not going to be every schedule within the document. If you click on your table of contents, then you'll have, um, all the different schedules you're going to see throughout the document. So if there's something in particular you want to see, they all have links. You can just click on it. It'll take you to that page. And then in addition to that, there's, there's more links that'll, that'll drill down into, to further information. So for instance, taxes here is just, you know, a very generic, right? It encompasses all the taxes. If you want to see what makes up that number. I gotta close this. Okay. Click on here, it'll take you to another page. It shows you the breakdown of taxes. If you're interested in property tax, you can click here and it'll take you into a page discussing the property tax. So it's very, very simple and efficient to use. Of course, just go back to your table of contents when you want to. Um, I think it'll, I mean, the idea here of course is to, to make the navigation very simple since we are moving from paper to an electronic form, um, as well as just presenting the budget in an easily digestible format.
Hey Wesley?
Yes?
Is there an ability to put like bookmarks or tabs or write notes for us reading those documents? Um, oftentimes when we've got it in paper, we've put tabs and written all sorts of notes so that we can discuss when we come up as a body. Any way to do that here or do I just have to have a legal pad next to me? Is there a search feature?
I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if we can do that specifically on OpenGov, but we may need to.
It can be done within, within Adobe. If you download as a PDF.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, James, because we can always set you all up with a setup to ensure that you can.
The system allows to, to download it and keep that file and do whatever you want inside that file and keep your notes.
Okay.
You have to save it to your.
Yeah, and we can make sure that, you know, you've, you've got the software, um, to be able to do that.
Just, you know, when, when we're reading it through the time and we have a note, it's not just a job.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Don't hit it though, but yeah.
You get it to work. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then Mark had asked a question if it was possible to, to search, like, right?
I, I can't do it from here. I don't have a keyboard, but, uh.
But yeah, I guess the answer is yes.
I mean, whether within the OpenGov document or the, or the PDF document, yes, we'll be able to search.
All right. Next, we kind of just wanted to go over a high-level budget calendar for y'all. Um, June fifteenth, we plan to distribute kind of the budget draft, what we just showed you, the stories and brief of all the departments so y'all can review before we have the budget work sessions at the end of June on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. That would be a special council meeting. Again, that would be our budget work sessions for the year. And then in August, on the third, at the regular council meeting, we will deliver the proposed budget document to council as well as the certified tax base data and the CETR data. to council, as well as calling for our public hearings on the budget and tax rate. And then, later in August, on the 26th, we'll have another special council meeting, where we will hold our first public hearing on the tax rate and the budget, as well as have our first vote on the budget ordinance, and the first vote on the tax rate. And it's important to remember that on the tax rate vote, that at least 60% of council must vote in favor of the ordinance. So, that's just key to keep in the back of our minds for that. And then, on August 31st, we'll have another special council meeting to adopt the budget, ratify the tax rate, and then adopt the tax rate again. And then, again, October 1st, our budget will become effective.
So, going forward, as had been previously mentioned, we're going to be using OpenGov to do the reporting and some stories on our capital projects. I'll click in here, and this will take you to a link. Again, this is not the city of Victoria, it's not going to look exactly the same, but it'll give you a good idea of the functionality and some of the information that it's capable of producing. So, here, they've got all their capital projects, they've got overview, and then broken down by department. So, we'll just click into Public Works. And these charts are dynamic, in that they'll update as information is updated. I don't know why, okay, there we go. So, what they have here is just a pie chart, breaking down by fiscal year and the different projects that they have. You can slide this far here to look at previous years. You can also change the chart type if you're wanting to compare multiple fiscal years a little bit easier. If you want to look into a specific project, you can just click here, and it'll update it to just show the cost for those projects. And then, below that here, what we'll have is each individual project listed out. What they have is, you know, pretty generic, just not a whole lot of detail here, just very high-level, the budget, what's been spent today, when they expect it to be completed. We plan to have links for each of these, that'll take you to a project worksheet, that's going to give you, you know, all the specifics on that project, which would include the budget by year, the funding sources, how it ties into the 2035 comp plan, among other items.
Basically, that part of the worksheet that I have in that current, you'll see it in OpenGov.
Also, as you change, or as you move forward, and there's like maybe budget amendments, or even a changing of a project from one period to another, that document will be able to show us live, kind of like a living book?
As long as the data's updated in OpenGov, then it'll update on the website.
Okay.
And is this a website or a program?
The OpenGov itself is an application, and it has the ability to, you can either embed the data into your actual website, so just within cityofvictorietx.gov, or it has a separate link it can set up, an OpenGov page for just for the city of Victoria as well. But it's, but it's kind of, there's two parts to it. There's an application part of it, and then the story side of it is an actual webpage.
So, like, how is it anticipated that we'll get to it? And I guess I wasn't really following, because I was following it for the budget process.
Right.
But is it anticipated the public will be looking at this, or just us?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And how will we get to it? It'll be a link on that.
Absolutely.
It's a cloud-based software program.
Right. And so, we, yeah, and we more than likely would have something like victorietx.gov/capitalprojects, as an example. And then, you could embed this program into that site, or just redirect to the OpenGov site, however we want to set it up, to be, we haven't figured that part out yet.
Okay.
But it'll absolutely be available to the public. Okay.
The reports for each department, are you going to have revenues for each department? Right now, revenues are separate, and they're all...
If you go back to the last one, what we're going to do is that there's a section, how each department would generate X revenue. I think we started this past budget. I plan to continue moving that process. And in other words, Parks Department generate X dollars, but they have a budget of this amount. How much is that being funded by fund balance or something else?
But it's going to be in their department, in the actual department?
We haven't talked about it yet. Remember, last year, I had it on one page?
Right.
And we're still developing the story, and we're going to fit it in there, so everything's centralized, it's not all over the place.
But I, you know, I'd like to see, when I look at the Parks Department, or the Fire Department, I'd like to know what revenue they bring in, without looking back on another page, and...
All right, well, we want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to present the new budget process using OpenGov. We're very excited about it. It has really streamlined the process for us in the finance office, and I know for the departments as well. Like I said, we've had a lot of positive feedback. I don't think we've heard anything negative at all, so just thank you for that. Any other questions that we can answer for y'all at this time? Okay, well, thank you all.
Great, thank you all.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Another round of applause.
I like that. We've had, what, like five rounds of applause? We need more rounds of applause. So, decision point, the next conversation that, which is the Yuri Freeze Event Report, it'll probably take 20, 30 minutes. So, if y'all are okay with it, we can just...
Let's do it.
Keep it rolling?
We're here.
All right. Go ahead, Ken, I'll let you take it away.
Is this working?
No.
No. Working now?
No.
Okay. Yuri, for instance, is a made-up name. It is truly the Freeze, and it's a dog in the call of courage. So, got that passed us. Okay. Quick, over the agenda, we're going to do a system overview, to kind of give you all an idea of how our water system works. Then, events leading to the system water loss, events during, what happened during it, event, actions taken to restore the water, what we learned, and then options to harden the system. Oop, too quick. This is overview schematic of the water system, and we'll go through each one individually, but you can see there's a lot of different sections going on. And I'll start, we start at the river pump station, which is on the other side of the river off Old Mexico Road. That pump station pumps the water via under the river, goes to our off-channel reservoirs. And from there, it takes it from the water order pump station to the surface water treatment plant, treat the water, get it cleaned up, put all the chloride, the chlorine in it, put it in the clear wells. Those are the two big domes you see out at the water plant. Each of them is 2.25 million gallons. We have two of them. From there, it goes in the clear wells. One side goes to, it's got three medium service pumps, they're basically called transfer pumps, and then it goes the other side, the other part of the pumping system, it goes into three high-service pumps. And I'll show you where those go. The mediums, transfer pumps, which is a medium service, goes to plant, Water Plant 3, okay? It's important to note that Water Plant 3 is located in the south pressure plane, okay? That's the one where we lost the water, basically. Goes into the Water Plant 3, gets re-chlorinated if it needs it, then goes into the ground storage tanks, all those ones you see. I think there's four of them, and it's a total of 5 million gallons, got it. And then, from there, it goes four more transfer pumps, take that, and shoots it out into the distribution system, and it gets to Water Tower Number 1 on West Street, Tower Number 3, which is on Armory on Mockingbird, and then the one on East Mockingbird. Want to make a point on this one, Tower Number 5 also has a little booster pump station. It's got two pumps in it. It can transfer water into the north pressure plane. So, we already do have one spot where we can move it over. Now, this is the north pressure plane, this is where the, that's the three high-service pumps went. This goes into Tower Number 6, which is Nursery, and Tower Number 4, which is over there on Placido Benavides. Let me go, go ahead. You want to go to Tower 2? Why we're missing that, or go ahead?
Yeah, I was going to ask, talk about why we don't have a water plant number 2?
Water plant, yes.
And a water tower number 2.
Right. Water Tower 2 was the old one on Pine Street, right there, Pine Street, kind of where Laurent was. It had the Tin Man-looking tower to it. It was 50, 60 years old. It was more like a, what do you call those things in Hawaii? Rain catcher. The roof was just gone.
Sistern.
Sistern. So, we decided to tear that out. Part of that reason we were able to tear out Plant 2, and we also tore out Plant 4, was because we went to surface water. Our whole system was based on groundwater, which meant we had to have water plants scattered all over Victoria. With one surface water plant, we're able to utilize one treatment area, transfer it to the Water Plant 3, and to the high-pressure plane. So, that's how we got rid of some of these water plants and water towers. Okay, SCADA. Our water plant was built in 1999. It's rated at about 22 MGD. It has got the expansion capability to go up to 33 million gallons. It's based off, again, surface water, conventional treatment, and being 20 years old, the SCADA system, which is a computerized supervisory control and data acquisition. It takes the data of the pumps, it takes data of the chemical feed rates, it takes data of the elevated towers, how full they are. It takes every bit of data, and then automates and syncs that water plant to run smoothly, to make sure you've got the right amount of chemicals, the polymers, everything to get that water treated. It's 20 years old. And keep in mind that 20 years ago, what Microsoft system were we working on? I mean, that's how far back, when you think 20 years, that's not that old. Look at Microsoft, we were probably running, you know, Word Number 3. That's kind of where we're at now.
Is it Y2K-proof, though?
Huh?
Y2K-proof?
Yes, that's true. It barely made that. Anyway, it collects data, important assets, our environment, elevated towers, ground towers, chemical, went through all of that, able to control equipment, and immediately respond to changed conditions. That's, keep that in mind as we go through this. It does lower operating costs, and the staff has to monitor this thing 24/7, they have to be there. There's no alerts, there's no things that ping to your phone. It's old. They're probably waiting phones back in.
So, real quick, because I don't, I know we're kind of somewhat laughing about it, but this is a problem. The system is 20 years old. I, for example, that particular day, which we'll get to, I was asking Ken questions about SCADA, because of my experience with SCADA in Kingsville, which is updated every three years, and only to find out that our SCADA is not as sophisticated as the SCADA that I was familiar with in Kingsville. And so, just keep that in mind as we get to a future slide, talking about, you know, how we can build some resiliency around the system. But that technology piece, we can't dismiss, because, for example, this says staff monitors the system 24/7. Well, the way we do that is by somebody physically having to look at a monitor in an office, versus in Kingsville, it was like an iPad-looking thing, the guy could take home with him, and he could monitor it, he could mess with it, laying in his bed if he wanted to. If he needed to shut off valves at towers, he could do it laying in his bed. It wasn't manual, it wasn't anything. And so, just to give you a sense of, when you're in a moment of crisis, the ability to be able to know as soon as possible, shift things around in the system as soon as possible, is a big deal. And our system is not there. So, we'll talk more about that, I guess, here in a future slide, but anyway, that's just one example.
Okay.
Go for it. Keep going.
Got it. One thing I do want to bring up real quick, what updates have we done since Hurricane Harvey? We've done a lot. Generator, we got all the generators up and going, they're all operational, everything ran good. We've got, we did a 2018 Water Master Plan, that's been a big help, that's feeding a lot of our CIP projects, and our current, where we're going with the water system. We've continued to improve our infrastructure, our downtown, all the downtown water and sewers done. We did the north height subdivision, we're doing airline road water line. We did an erosion project that was caused by the hurricane out at the pump, the river pump. And we've readjusted the pressure plane. I think that was the biggest thing that we've done since Hurricane Harvey. We've adjusted it, and it's made a big difference in how we can keep working towards having north plane and south plane work together. We're not there yet, but we are getting closer. And we also built Pump Station 5 as part of that, after Hurricane Harvey. Here's a quick slide, available storage. I'm not going to go through this, you can read these, but total, we have 14 million gallons now. That's it, keep that 14 million, but I'll get through to some other slides, which will explain, when you think, well, gosh, that's a lot of water. We'll go through the next couple of slides. That's just a picture of the surface water plant. The big things in the back, that's your sedimentation basins, those are large, real big. Now, what exasperated this situation is, one of them was offline in repairs. That's when you want to do it, in the winter time. What we, you know, now, and I'll get into lessons learned, but I'll go ahead and jump, is lesson learned is, I don't care, fix the repairs, bolt it together, glue it together, get that train back up. That water was used after it. Here's the two pressure planes. It basically is up around Vine Street, goes up to Sam Houston, back down to Vine, and you'll see the north pressure plane, and then the south pressure plane. North covers about 10 square miles, and includes Towers 4 and 6. The south pressure plane, the lower pressure plane, is basically south of that, and it's got three towers, Tower 1, Tower 3, and Tower 5, and it's about 25 square miles. Overall, the city has 405 miles of water line. And to put that into perspective, that would be a water line from here to Denton, Texas. So, that's a lot of water line, and it's a big system. One of the things I want to talk about is the events leading to the water loss. The plant, and I'm going to let y'all read this, but I'm just going to talk. When I started talking to the operators out there, in the maintenance decks, everything froze. It started really on Sunday, and when I mean everything, I mean every tower level indicator, the lines on the top of the pumps and motors that were feeding the water to read that pump, that was frozen. We had heat tape already on them, they were insulated, they were freezing through that. We had to undo the tape and the heat tape, so we could blowtorch to melt them. And when they get one undone and unfrozen, go to the next one, do that one, that would be refrozen. So, it was just, they were going from one to one. We weren't getting the data, the reliable data, that Jesus mentioned, that Kingsville has, is, it wasn't getting that data reliable, so we couldn't really see just every second what was going on. We knew we had water, we didn't, we weren't sure, is it full, is it half-full? And that's where I was saying, we were running from one place to another, high-service pumps line frozen. We had to build a building around one of them, just to keep it from freezing. We did increase the flow at that one filter, the sedimentation basin. We went from 12 to 14. The maximum rated is 11. So, they were pushing it, and it was good water, that was another key point. All of this happening, our operators still had to make sure that they had all the chemicals, all the flocculent material, all the polymers, all the chlorine, they had to meet the parameters that TCQ requires. This continued on February 16th. We increased all the way up to 16. And that was pretty amazing, that they got to that level of water. Water Plant Three, Level Equipment froze. Short circuit, we repaired it. Tower Level One Indicator, frozen, and then the housing broke. Got it replaced with a manual gauge. Tower Five, again, water line at the bottom of the bowl broke. Broke out, we were leaking water. They got that fixed, replaced the Level Indicator and the housing. Tower Six, same thing. We had three gauges that are manual read in our hands. We called every, they called other places around. Nobody had them, they were all gone. All the manual gauges, Level Indicators, Texas was over, cause everybody's wanting them. And then, I wanna go to the next slide. At 3 o'clock is when the water pressure fell below 20 at Tower Three. Here is a typical day, and this is what I was getting into. Here's a typical day, this is July. And I want you to see how those towers fluctuate. You gotta keep those towers moving. You don't wanna fill them full, because then that water and that tower stagnant, and it's gross. So you keep that water, you fill it up, they go down. You fill it up, they go down. You wanna keep that water moving, keep that taste, keep the odor out of there. And that's just a typical day in July. And you can see how much they drop. It's a lot. But, we build them back up. Some cities that I know of, they absolutely, during the day, they will drain that tank because they have such heavy water use. And they pray every night that they can fill that thing up for the next day. And I know City of Capella at one time, that's what was happening to them. They were short on towers, and they drain it every night.
And just to add, Ken, part of what, and he kinda flew through it earlier, was we have the capacity for 15 million gallons
Right.
of water per day. Or just in general, just 15 million, or is it 14? I'm blanking out now. But anyway, 15 million gallons capacity. That does not mean that at any given point, there's 15 million gallons there. And that's something important to keep in mind as we go through this presentation, and he shows you some other charts about the water usage on that day. Because if you think of it from the perspective of, well, there should've been 15 million gallons in storage tanks, the math doesn't make sense. Well, that's false, right? Because there's never, you know, 15 million gallons of water stored in the system. That's just the capacity. But as you can see, it's always lower, it fluctuates, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So just keep that in mind.
Okay. Good point, thank you.
How come Tower Six doesn't change? Just curious.
Tower Six. That one, is it the North Pressure Plane? And the pumps push that water top. We have to do some manual manipulation at times to keep that thing moving.
And there's actually water that comes out of it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at this thing.
It's the nursery drive, and we do. That's one of those things that that interconnect may help. Matt's over there, he's nodding yes. That may help that tower fluctuate more. But we've always had some issues with that. We've had some complaints because of that. But we've got that resolved.
Hey, Ken, pardon me. Jesus, you mentioned not our capacity versus what we have in there.
Correct.
Prior, knowing certain events may come up, do we fill to maximum capacity prior to that? Such as a hurricane coming in?
Sure.
Or something of that nature, so that we maximize our water?
Sure, well, that's a great question, but keep in mind the physics behind it, right? So for example, if you had water in your bathtub, and you wanted to fill it up, you fill it up by clogging it, and then you fill it up. We can't shut the system down to fill up the tanks, right? And we have zero control over demand, right? So we can try and pump more water, but, you know, we can't control how much is going out.
The best way I can describe it is, and the key remember is, we're pumping from the surface water plant to Water Plant Three. Even to get to the towers from Water Plant Three, it's gotta go through the distribution system. And at that time, the distribution system was like a paper cup with a thousand holes in it. It couldn't get there.
Sure.
Now, your key point, and I wanna go ahead and hit this. We need, and I, you know, lessons learned. Fill everything up, fill it full, keep it full. I don't care, don't let it fluctuate. And yes, we'll have that extra water. Will it make it? That's a good question, but.
And he's referring to at the plant. He's referring, his comment now, he's referring specifically at the plant. We can't control some of the towers because of they're connected through the system. But the things that we can control,
Right.
that's what he's referring to. Like the Clearwells,
Yes.
for example, at the plant. Perfect example, right? One of them was off because it was winter, and that's when you shut them off. But that's what he means.
And even keeping the elevated, I mean, prior to it, like Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, fill them to the top and just crank them top. Now, we know as lines break, they're gonna go down. But, you know, yes, we wanna keep it full. Don't do that July thing right there beforehand. The day before, day of, you fill them up and you keep them topped off. Yeah, they'll get a little stale.
And we've obviously have talked about this, you know, internally, right? Trying to play different scenarios in our head. But quite frankly, had we had more water stored, it just would've meant that it would've been 6:00 PM that day instead of 3:00 PM, right?
And I, we're gonna show that.
I mean, sure, it makes a difference, but it doesn't fix the issue, right?
Sure, I understand that.
And that's one of the things we get when we show how many leaks there actually were. This is the day.
I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
And I was just gonna say, I mean, that kinda leads to a public education thing. And I know there's some discussion, like, a lot of those pier and beam houses, it would've been better if they were shut, if the water lines were closed instead of the water running. And while we're creating a lot of water so that people can run it, it really would be better for us if people weren't running their lines. But that's not practical either, right?
Right.
Right, yeah. And that's, I mean, that's the, it's a double-edged sword, right?
Right.
And we can talk more about that when he gets to the slide
Yes.
on consumption. Cause we'll show you how much water ran through meters that day. And it's.
It's a lot, it's incredible. You'll see a big difference. Here's the day. And you'll see that Tower Three, which is the critical one, Tower Four went down, but it actually did come back up. Now, that's the bottom of the bowl. So I know there had to have been water. And the reason I say I know there was water in it, because the North Pressure Plane, it dropped a little bit, but it never went out of water. Nobody lost all their water. So it dropped out. Tower Six, that Level Indicator was broken right before the freeze. We hadn't gotten the parts in yet. So we knew that line, that line's inaccurate. So we knew, and we were reading that one. So kinda disregard that. We had to, kept looking at that, and Jesus said, why is that flatlined? Whenever they flatline like that, like Tower Six, and you'll see Tower Five below that, when they flatline, that's an inaccurate reading. That's, don't, don't even look at those. You know something's fouled up with it. But what I wanna point out is what we always look at is see that Tower Three went down, and then it bumped back up. And every, that's a key point. You look for that bump. And it was bumping up, but I'll show you on the next slide why it didn't bump back up like it did in the other slide of July.
And just really quickly, just to talk about one of the limitations of SCADA. Like, if you look at the access on the left, it's showing you.
Elevation of the tower.
It's not telling you how much water is in the storage tank, right? It's telling you it's at 27 feet, or it's at, you know, whatever the elevation is, right? So there's, think about the manual work that would have to be done after the fact to determine, well, how much water is it when it's at 27? How much water is it when it dips down to 24? Who knows, right? Versus having a SCADA system that would tell you, you know, exactly how many millions of water it is. Just as an example.
And the new ones would. You just take the bolt size diameter and eclipse.
But that's already built in the system.
Built in.
Hey, Ken, where's Tower One on there?
Tower One is down there on West Street. It was already gone.
Where's Tower One on that graph?
Tower One doesn't show up because Tower One was out. Okay? Tower One, yeah. And we gotta remember, a lot of these, because they didn't show up, it doesn't mean they didn't have water. It just means that Level Indic, something was frozen out there. We were still freezing. And if you look at the time, and what I wanna also bring out, there is a, somewhere in the morning, the world started to thaw out in Victoria, Texas. And when it thawed out, that was game over for us because not only did the people and everybody's life thaw out, their lines thawed out, and those broken pipes went. And what I think also, this assumption on my part, is they had their faucets open. There wasn't any water coming out. But when it did unfreeze, that also transpired to just more water coming out of the system. Ken, you just described my kitchen. I had a frozen hot water line at my kitchen sink, and I left my hot water faucet turned completely on. And about 3 o'clock that afternoon, my hot water started running. I went, great, and I went and I shut it off. Well, see, you shut it off. There were some that weren't home that didn't shut it off, probably. At 3:45, that's when I notified the city manager of the boil water notice. If it gets, the water pressure gets below 20 PSI, TCQ requires you to issue a boil water notice. 8:00 PM, we officially put it out to the public. And then, right between that time, and I, it's, sorry about that, Jesus. At 5:30, we started working on the plan already. How can we get the water back on? How can we get out of the boil water notice? We were already moving. We were filling things up, we were filling that other basin up. We were isolating tanks. Whatever we needed to do, we were out there hustling to get this thing back up. And we figured Thursday evening or early Friday, we'd be, every tank, everything would be full. And all we'd have to do is start running the guns. Now, remember, what's crazy is you gotta remember, Tank Three, Tank Five, we couldn't fill up until we got water into those ground storage tanks at Water Plant Three. So those are gonna be empty until we crank those up. I'm not gonna go back to that slide, but Tower One can also be filled from the high service, okay? Which goes to the North Pressure Line. We got a 12-inch independent line going over there. So we filled that one up early, early on. So by Friday morning, we were up with all the water tanks, except for the ones coming out of the water plant. Action's taken, this is, I kinda went over this. We filled that second basin. We got crews all available. We had crews from Contractor. We had our crews lined up, ready to go as soon as we turned the water on, get out there and start turning valves, water meters off. We'd knock on the door, ask them, hey, we're gonna turn your water meter off, you got a huge leak. We had everybody out there. Fill up the ground storage tanks, fill the elevated storage tanks, following that. And then planned to resume. We planned at 7:00 AM Friday morning. Reason being, we wanted to be able to see the leaks. And we had everybody ready, and we did. We turned off. That's February 20th, that's after everything got going. You can see everything's getting back to normal. Tower Five bounced, then it, then it, I think there was some ice or something in it, and it came on, and it started tracking well. This is the water consumption data, and this was, Jesus was talking about. If you look at the dark orange line, is a typical, that was February, that was 2020, February, the same week. It's, our consumption's around 6 million gallons. It bumps up and down, but that's average. On the week of the freeze, you'll look at the 15th. It goes all the way up to 8 and 1/2 million gallons of consumption. We are just way over the top. That's when the faucets were ripping and running. People had them wide open. We had apartment complexes that put the word out to all their residents, open every faucet in your apartment full. And it ate our lunch. Then the 16th, you can see, that's when faucets were still going, and all the leaks came on. We doubled the volume of water that was leaking out of our system. Then the 17th. You're looking at that, you're going, well, we were out of water, right? Here's the interesting thing. South Pressure Plane, remember, it's up around Mockingbird, okay? Victoria at Mockingbird, that's high compared to Silver City, you know, Water Street. So what was happening is, the first people to lose water was the people up around Mockingbird Airline Road. They were like, I got no water. The guy down there on Mayfair Edition, he still got water. We basically gravity flowed our water system south. 10 million gallons of water, we still got in our water system. So it gravity flows, they were still, they had water, low pressure, but they had water. Downside is, guess what we had to do? We had to start the water plant, we had to fill the water lines up. So we kinda had to play catch-up that next day.
Can you go back? Just real quick, on the 19th, you can tell when water came back too, right? Cause, you know, 19th, it's like, oh, water's back. And everybody's like, well, time to take that shower, time to wash the clothes, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So no big shocker there, right? But that's the explanation for that, right?
And the leaks were still happening.
And just, you're correct. And just to reiterate, you know, one of the big differences with this situation and, you know, previous situations is that this wasn't a system-wide loss, right? And obviously, the data supports that it wasn't. Which, we already knew that, but the data supports that.
And this is a real quick map. I think y'all have seen this. Jesus put this together in his presentation. Shows the leaks by pressure plane. You'll see the North Pressure Plane. Newer homes, a little bit newer construction. The line going up Navarro. We proactively turned every sprinkler system off all the way up Navarro, all the main drags. We just did it, we didn't ask. We said, we don't want that messing our system up. South Pressure Plane, a lot more. It's the pier and beam homes, the older homes, that a lot of those just experienced leaks. My daughter, her house blew a line in the backyard. My daughter, her house blew a line in the backyard. Uh, we would've never seen it, driving around. She did. Other collected data, between the period of the 15th and the 20th, we turned off 966 meters. That's a lot. We, the 19th, which is the day we got the water back on, we turned off 419. That's just in the south pressure plane. And just picture opening up, taking, taking your water line and cutting in half and just letting it run. Because a faucet is, it's still gonna restrict, but when you open it up, it's flowing. We responded 2,500 calls. We had citizens calling every second, every minute of every, all day long. Uh, they kinda slowed down about 10 or 11 o'clock sometimes. TCEQ reported over 500 public water systems issuing boil water notice, and which affected 11 million. There's, and, and I'm, I'm just gonna say this, that's a lot. Most of Texas was under that. That's the ones that did report their water system going under 20 PSI. My feeling is, there was a lot of them that did drop there. They got it back. They were like, "Okay, we're back. Uh, no harm, no foul." What we learned, communication, communication, communication. Keep the public, tell them early, tell them what to do. When is it gonna be bad? Things I've read is the southern part of the United States isn't built like Michigan. It's not. And that, that's well-known, well-written. They're saying that the southern United States, 20 degrees for about four hours, you're gonna have big problems. We had it all day, all day long, all night long, couple of nights in a row. We had bigger than bigger problems. But at 20, 20 and, for four hours, you're gonna have some broken lines, you're gonna have some freezing lines. Dripping faucets, you can drip them, don't run them. That, that just, it, it, it's so much. And even the, the reports will tell you, once you start dripping, and that, that'll freeze up, you can crank it open a little bit, and if you get a small stream, okay. Once that stream freezes up, they will tell you, you turn your faucets off because all you're gonna do is you're gonna cause that ice dam, when your line starts thawing out, it's gonna, it's gonna break free, that chunk of ice in your line, and it's gonna hit a 90. Or it's gonna hit another piece of pipe that's not quite round, and that's what's gonna break your line. They say, "Just turn it off, turn all your lines off, let them thaw out, and then turn your water on." Uh, I think a lot of the public, I didn't know that, but when you start thinking about it, you're like, "Ooh, that makes sense." Not enough information again about potential issues, how to react. Infrastructure, infrastructure items. What we learned, check all the gauges at Towers and Remote Facilities for insulation with secured backup gauges. Get heat lamps out there, get them turned on, buy them, do whatever we did, get, get them ahead of time. Get them into this summer, get some of those devices where we can put out there to keep that heated, keep it warm. Technology, SCADA, not reliable during freeze event. We know that now. And it doesn't show specific gallons. It only shows elevation. Options for resiliency. Here's some of the things that, that we're, we're moving forward on. Some of the is construct that second interconnect, south plane, north plane at Mockingbird Vine. CIP project, 2223, that's the one you mentioned about, Dan. We want that. Evaluate feasibility to install a remote automated control valves at high user locations. And what those are, is you can install a, a sensor control valve for a meter, where you can actually, with, with the proper equipment and the proper notifications, you can turn that valve off remotely. Well, you got an apartment complex that's just burning through water, or a school, and they, they were all leaking. You've got West High School that, that's got a major leak and a 6-inch line. We can turn it off, call them and say, "Hey, we had to turn your water off." You know, you were burning through, you know, a full 6-inch line.
Yes, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Finish your sentence.
I did.
Okay. So just for further clarification, right? So the city invested in a, in a new program, right, a few years ago to help benefit the residents, keep better track of their water usage. That's accurate. Residents have to sign up for that system, put alerts, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But that system doesn't provide that same benefit to us, right? So that system doesn't send us alerts saying, "Hey, the school district, property X, has a bunch of water going towards it," right? That system is built to benefit the resident, not us.
I thought at one time we were sold that that did that.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but.
I remember that too.
But it doesn't. At least not in real time. At least not in, at least not in real time. So the way that it was explained to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's possible to do that, but it's a manual process, right? Meaning, meaning that they collect the data, UBO reviews it, and says, "Holy moly, like there's an excess." And so then they send a notice. So it's not like actually live. It's a very manual process. But in a moment of crisis situation, you need that information live. And quite frankly, even the alerts that you put as a resident aren't live either, right? So for example, I have, I have the system set up for, for my house, and I might get the alert the next day. I might get it two days later, right? And so it's not real time. And so I think it's important, uh, that everybody kinda understand what the system is and what it wasn't. I obviously can't speak to how it was sold or how it was communicated to you in the past. Uh, but the reality is that that system, in real time, does not provide information to us to be able to shut off that school or shut off that apartment complex. And even if it did, um, it's a manual process to do that.
My question is, if it is still available, although it's passed, could it help in the future? Like, if you know what areas were hit the most, could that data be gathered and, and, you know, kept so that way, if it happens again, we know where the hotspots are?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I mean, if it happened tomorrow, we already know which schools we'd go shut down, which, I mean, we, I mean, we could already tell you, you know, that. So yeah, absolutely, right? I mean, we probably don't need to fully invest in the system to know, like, "Okay, the freeze is coming. We need to just shut off that school," right? Or that property or whatever. So yes, operationally, you know, we can now be more conscious, you know, of doing that stuff. Um, but I know that there's been a lot of questions, I shouldn't say a lot. There's been some questions, maybe even some confusion surrounding what that system, um, is versus not. I know I've had some pretty strong conversations with some of you about that system. Um, but I think it's important to just put it out there that that system does not provide that information to us in real time. The closest that it does is to the resident. And even at that, it's like the next day.
And that is one thing that's in the budget. We're gonna get with the company, the, the software group that did, does the, our, our programming through UBO. We've got money in there. We're planning on budgeting, sitting down, talking to them. What improvements can we, we, we make to do some of this and reduce that time in the office to have to manually go through everything? There's a lot of manual work that they do that is inefficient. We need to update that program or look at that whole utility billing thing.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's more of the latter that we're gonna do, which is just reassessing every single component of the water meter situation. Um, because, and I don't mean to digress too much, but even the meters themselves that we have, and the company that is, that provides the meters, um, how can I say it?
They're okay.
They're okay. They're okay.
They're sensors.
That's a great way to put it.
They're just not okay.
It's okay, but it's not great, right? And so it's only a matter of time before we have to have a conversation about replacing the meters anyway. Um, and so that would be the perfect time to reassess the quality of the meter itself, the backbone of the data that the water meter itself, um, produces and all of that stuff. So that's coming, you know, in years' future, but.
That is.
Anyway, but it's all connected, right, with the system and the software?
Uh, the other one, other option, of course, is construct that other filter basin, that other, that other train. That'd give us 10 more million gallons again. Is that, that's not necessary now based on our growth and our, our capacity 99% of the time? But it's out there.
But if we had that additional basin, we would have, it would, we would be in a better position if you had to shut one down for maintenance, because at that point, you'd have two remaining operational versus right now, when you shut one down for maintenance, you only have one. Um, for example, I read an interesting article that, that came out that week after, that the city of Longview, they have three, three water plants. They ramped up their capacity to over 55 million gallons of water production per day. Um, and Longview's, sure, it's bigger than us, but it's not like vastly larger than us. They avoided going below 20 PSI because they ramped up to that extent to give you a sense of, you know, how much water it might take to be pumping to avoid, you know, that water pressure, even with a bunch of leaks and breaks and stuff like that. Um, so even if we're not there yet from a growth standpoint, I do think it warrants a conversation about that and other elements about water storage to help facilitate when you do have major breaks or other things that happen. Because as you can see by the slide in peak time in July, there's a lot of fluctuation already to begin with. Um, and so how comfortable are we as it relates to that? Um, and I don't wanna digress to another topic.
And I'll add to his, because the next item is when you increase that water flow, you're gonna increase pressures, you're gonna, you're gonna add another high-service pump, you're gonna add more pumps? Now we got our old cast iron mains that are on Airline Road that keeps breaking. We got one on Loren Street that keeps breaking. All those cast iron mains, we better start looking at those, because we're gonna split them. Uh, one thing at, at Water Plant 3, yes, we have four pumps. If we cranked them all up, we'd have blown, I wouldn't, I don't even wanna know how many pipes we'd have blown, but we ramped those up very slowly. Another one, indicate, uh, initiate water cutoffs behind the meters, okay? Currently, new subdivisions, new houses, that's required. In all of our construction plans, when we replace water lines, all the downtown project, all of North Heights, for the last probably 10 years, we put them in as part of our project for the homeowner. So they're already there. So if you were to go out to North Heights, go right next to your meter, you see the little round green box? There's your cutoff. Quarter turn, ball valve, they're all there. They're all downtown. We've been doing that. Do we wanna go out to do a program? That's something that we can look at in the future to install them for everybody else.
So is that in addition to the valve that's already there?
It's, it's, the meter has a meter cutoff inside the meter box. This is behind that. It's basically your private cutoff.
Well, I always just use the one.
In the meter box?
Yeah.
Don't break it. They, 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 they are very, man, they get so tight, like, you have to use a cheater bar to turn it. But if you do break it, you, we're gonna bill you for that, and they're expensive.
Well, I'm glad nothing happened because I was turning off neighbors when they needed it.
And, and we, we told the citizens, we told the, they were calling up saying, "Can I turn it off?" We said, "If you can, go for it. Please, we need your help." So yes, there were a lot of people turning them off.
Ours is pretty stiff the last time we tried.
They, they are. They get tight. And just that one behind your water meter makes it so much simpler. Then you don't, you just turn it off and go. Some of them are at the front of the house. Technology, evaluate the automatic, uh, meter reading system for, to isolate customers. That, we talked about that already. Uh, you could use crews again to turn off meters. Again, you're, you're, you're using valuable time going from one to the other. Update the SCADA system that allows more accurate, detailed information. Uh, one of the things I didn't touch on was, yes, we had a water system issue. But guess what? We have 17 lift stations. We have no remote controlled SCADA system or anything. We don't know what they're doing. We got a call. One of them overflowed. It lost power. We have no generators at those 17 lift stations. We had to go out there manually pump it. So now, on top of all the water garbage we were doing, we had to go chase lift stations to make sure that the power is still running, and if they weren't, we had to pump them down. So this SCADA system that I'm talking about, we're putting it in the budget for a hun, for $150,000 for a consultant to come in, take a grand, big-picture view of it. Look at our water SCADA. Look at our wastewater treatment that should be tied into one system. Like Jesus is saying, we can see the water on a screen at the water plant. We can see the sewer system at the sewer plant. We can't see them together, and he can't see it. If he wanted to look at it and say, "Man, what, what are they doing? How's it flowing?" He can't look at it. We wanna integrate it all together so it's one complete unit system, all the same program, all the same hardware, same PLCs, everything.
And, and that's the way that it should be, right? There's no reason why anybody should be dealing with a 20-year-old SCADA system that's not centralized, right? And, and I assumed, quite frankly, that we had a SCADA system that was, had everything for water and sewer combined. I assumed that it had certain capabilities, um, because it's just one of those things that just is sort of just standard, right? So it was very easy for me to just assume that that would be the case. And obviously, we're finding out that we haven't invested in that, in that system to the extent that we should be. Um, and you would think that it would've been easier to do it since our utility funds are typically in better financial shape than, than the others, right? So, you know, at that point, it becomes more of a management type of issue, more so than it does funding at that point. But anyway, that's, probably shouldn't have said that right, but.
Next steps. Here's some of the thing, infrastructure projects. Construct that, that connection that, between pressure planes in the CIP. Add potable water connection, a soft, surface water treatment plant to fill potable water trucks, Tracy Fox. We had a hydrant out there, but it was connected via our water system. It wasn't a direct feed from the water plant. So we couldn't use that water because we were under boil water notice. Want to do is put one out there that comes right off of the plant before it gets into the distribution system. We could get water that dialysis enters. Uh, purchase gauges, new ones withstand the freeze, buy extras. And they're not that expensive, but buy extras. Insulate the high-service line valves, prevent from freezing. Again, insulate them, but also find, what do we need to do when that freeze comes? Do we need to go ahead and shelter it? Have that shelter ready? Technology, I talked about that, hiring that consultant to look at the SCADA system. Let's get that upgraded. I think that's one of the keys for us to provide you all the information, and us the information. I'm not gonna go through these. Uh, out of the 2,500 calls, 1,500 were most of these questions. And that's it.
I just wanna briefly add, you know, we, um, obviously focused, focusing the conversation on water, right? But as Gilbert mentioned, you know, we did have a issue at a lift station. Um, and he made the comment about them not having generators. Um, it's probably not feasible to have a generator at every single lift station, right? I mean, I don't, no city does. Um, but there might be a handful that makes sense. And do we have the, um, portable generators that we need to be able to mobilize them to the individual lift stations? And can they be easily hooked up to those lift stations, right? And so on the sewer side, that's more of the resiliency conversation for us. It's just, you know, are the adequate hookups at the lift stations? Do we have the mobile generators to be able to quickly mobilize and get that going? So that's more, we, again, we didn't hit much on that, but that's practically the extent of what we learn on the wastewater side.
In the budget.
In the budget.
In the budget.
Quick question. Did you look at the clay valves that Raleigh, uh, was talking about?
Yes. We've got those at Water Plant 3. What he wanted, what that one was, was to put them at the base of the, the towers, keep them full. If we would've done that, immediately, we would've gone into boil water because they would've lost the pressure. And most of this, most places I know don't do that because of that reason. You wanna keep that water coming in and out. By turning off and isolating that tower, you've in effect gone into boil water because you, you will lose that pressure.
So on the boil water notice, if the north pressure plane still had the pressure, but the south didn't, you have to do boil water notice for the whole system and not one versus the other?
We asked that.
Or is it just too confusing for everybody to get the information and know where they lie?
Too confusing. That's exactly what it was. We talked to TCQ, and they said, "You gotta have a defined line." If we had that north pressure plane, like, i- if you're north of Mockingbird, you don't have to boil. If you're south, you do. It, it was.
And, and I don't know if you saw that some larger communities were able to do that. Um, but larger communities are able to do that because over time, they've acquired smaller systems, right? So for example, I'm gonna make something up. If we ever grew and one day said, "Oh, we're taking over Quail Creek." Well, everybody knows what area is Quail Creek. TCQ hasn't documented which area is Quail Creek, so it makes it real easy to just do that, right?
It's a whole separate system.
Right, because it used to be a whole separate system, so the documentation and everybody's used to it, so it makes it a little bit easier to do that. Because San Antonio, for example, they took over Bear Met, and, you know, anyway, that's a whole other conversation for another day. Uh, but San Antonio, Dallas, et cetera, they're able to do that for that reason, that they have smaller systems that they've taken over over time. In our particular case, it'd be very difficult to do that. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so this is directly related to the water, but it's a little bit different angle. Um, we established sewer rates for residences for water usage in December, January, February. So are we looking at that aspect?
We already have. Anybody that used a lot of water, all they need to do is call UBO. We'll go back to last year's average. Is that what you mean?
Well, yes.
Do you mean on a more permanent?
No, no, just for this particular year. Is there anything that we can do that wouldn't require them to call? Probably not, because you're saying you don't really get those notices.
That would be very difficult because it's a very individualized situation, right? So for example, some folks probably maybe use less water than the previous month. Um, and so.
I guess it's just the leaks is.
Right. I mean, what would've caused the higher usage would've been leaks, breaks, et cetera. Um, and those folks have called the office and had their bills adjusted. And I don't know if you have a number on how many people we've helped.
And I guess that would take care of it then, because if they're. And I guess that would take care of it then, because if their bill was adjusted, then that's the number that would go into the calculation.
Yep. And a lot of people, I, I heard some, that they said they, they had a leak, they got their water bill, and they're like, no difference. They still didn't use the minimum.
One quick question. With regards to the lift stations on the sewer system, how come those weren't an issue during Hurricane Harvey, or were they, and we just didn't hear about it?
They were, we just didn't hear about them. And we already had, we had a generator already there, so we were pumping them down, but yes, they, they were an issue. But we did have a generator. This, we called a rental, and they had one on the freeze here quick, so we were able to station it at certain ones, but it was an issue. But we, we had a rental.
I think we should probably missed an opportunity with Harvey Grant money to identify that as a project, to put, you know, transfer switches on all those 17 lift stations, so that we could easily hook up a generator.
True.
Great point.
Is there FEMA money that we could get because of the freeze?
Well, so, so recall that out of the $15 million that came from this rescue act from a few weeks ago, some of that can be utilized for water, was it wastewater too, right? Water and wastewater infrastructure. So that could be an opportunity for us to leverage some money out of that pot of money, to be able to do things like SCADA. Because SCADA, I can tell you right now, it's not gonna be cheap to update and get SCADA system that, quite frankly, we need. And so, more than likely, that's gonna come from that. But there might be some other opportunities. We know that out of the same, I guess, most recent stimulus, if I can call it that, there's also gonna be more grant opportunities. And so we'll keep an eye out for those. But yeah, I mean, I, I think there's gonna be opportunities. And, and it seems like they're including water and wastewater infrastructure and everything that's coming out from the pandemic. I mean, I'm sorry, from the, from the freeze and the pandemic. So there, there'll be plenty of opportunities for us.
Okay, one more round of applause. Thank you, Ken.
We can get used to that.
And Jeff, I know you're thinking, because you're an engineer, I know you got like a million questions, but I'm waiting, I'm waiting.
Well, it's late.
And tell Lee Sack he can't, no, Darrell, stay.
All right. Well, those are all the reports that we have. Thank you for sticking around.
This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, guys.